Yeah, yeah. Well, good morning. I apologize for the slightly late start, but you know, it's Corner Bakery, so I'm sorry. So, let me get my glasses out so we can actually function here. She said, as everybody waits while she fumbles through the giant purse. So, we're going to call this meeting to order, and if you'd please stand, and we'll have the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alexander is absent. Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Okay, so let me go ahead and just follow the agenda. So we're on to business items. Any member of the public may address the City Council on items that appear on the business portion of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculascia.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the City Council policy regarding public participation at meetings, adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number one is Conduct Media Relations Training Workshop. All right. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the City Council knows, on July 14th, 2020, the City Council approved our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Initiative. In Phase One of the initiative, the City Council indicated a desire to conduct a media relations training. On July 13th, 2021, the City Council approved an agreement with NV5 at the recommendation of subcommittee members Mayor Edwards and Mayor Protem Ron to go ahead and conduct the training. The workshop this morning is being conducted as a result of that direction. And finally, with this training, we're actually done with all items under Phase One of our ready initiative. We have also completed our Phase Three items in regards to the budget going to boards and commissions, and the draft equity value is finding its way through the process with the Blue Ribbon Committee. So in Phase Two, the only things that continue to be outstanding are the City Council protocol manual, as well as any external outreach you guys would like to do in the future based on the pandemic-related external environment. But other than that, this concludes Phase One and Phase Three. So with that, I am actually going to introduce Gabriella and Jenna from NV5, and they will go ahead and give a more detailed introduction of themselves here shortly.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can everybody hear okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, it is such a pleasure to be here. We're going to dive right into the presentation, and there's an agenda included so that we can have a sense of how this training session is going to unfold. We're going to do introductions in just a moment, explaining my background and Jenna's background. We're going to first cover why are we here today, what is media training? And then we're going to get into some best practices, specifically for cities, public agencies. We're going to have a break at 11 o'clock, so between 11 and 11:15, we'll all take a moment. And then we'll come back and do some role-playing examples, and we will have a review of the information that was covered, and then we'll just do a quick conclusion. There are going to be opportunities for Q and A. You'll see a slide that says, you know, any questions about the information that's been covered. We really want to keep this, you know, a dialogue. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them as we go through it, but do know that there is going to be a pause through the different sections. And we're going to include some videos. So we want to make it fun. You'll see some of the videos are lighthearted as we kind of give some examples of, this is one technique to try, and this is an example of an interview where, you know, the best practices weren't followed in it, you know, kind of led to a different outcome. So, any questions about the agenda? Do it sound okay with that? Perfect. So again, my name is Gabriella Dow. I'm a Director with the Community Relations Division of NV5. I'm dating myself, but I'm realizing I bring now 30 years of experience, probably a little bit more than that, in the realm of communications. I actually started my career in journalism. I wrote for my high school newspaper down in San Diego. That led to writing for the UCLA Daily Bruin. And then I also, in the 1990s, went from newspapers to working at TV stations. So the local news station in Los Angeles, KCBS TV. And then I also did some work at CNN in the Washington DC Bureau. So that was just when news was becoming a 24-hour cycle. The satellite feeds were a very big deal back then. And then I also did some work in the Los Angeles Bureau for CNN in LA. And then, of course, media moved into digital platforms. And so I have experience working with what we now see as the online publications. I also then moved into the private sector, and I've worked as a Communications Director for technology companies, for engineering firms. And in between the journalism and working for the private sector, I also worked for elected officials and for public agencies. I was an Intergovernmental Affairs Officer for a governor in his Washington DC Bureau. And then I also worked in the White House Office of Public Liaison, is what it was called at the time. Today, it's called the Office of Public Engagement. And so there's some interface with the media, but a lot of interface with the community. And that's a lot of the work that I do now with public agencies, is engaging with the public and receiving that public input, as well as coordinating with the press, with the media.
Test 12? All right, we're working. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jenna Caprera, and I am an Integrated Marketing Specialist with NV5. I have over 15 years of experience working with the media in various capacities on behalf of my clients, which have included cities, public agencies, companies in the private sector, and also nonprofit agencies. I have, I actually grew up in Marietta and was here before the mall was built in Temecula, so I'm very familiar with your city, and it's nice to be back. And I've actually worked with a lot of the press that covers this area, the Press Enterprise, Valley News, and then also press in San Diego and LA, which I know often cover your area as well. I've also had the opportunity to work with national media, including CNN, The Wall Street Journal, and the Associated Press, to name a few. And over my many years in this industry, I have seen the pitfalls of interviews going poorly. And so it's a great thing to be here with you today to help you all, you know, gain some strategies and polish your skills so we can avoid those pitfalls and learning things the hard way.
Fantastic. And really quickly, sometimes we get people that pull up NV5.com. Just a quick, who is NV5, or what is NV5? It's really an engineering firm, a municipal consulting firm. And so Jenna and I work alongside, you know, people who are former public works directors, people who are designing bridges or working on water resource systems. As I mentioned, we are in the Community Relations Division. NV5 was originally known as NOLTI in Southern California and has been around for more than 65 years. So talk about seeing the region really develop. And the majority of our work involves public meetings, stakeholder working groups, the ribbon cuttings that everybody enjoys, receiving public input. And so that just gives you a little bit of an idea of the types of projects that we work in, and then how media falls into that. So let's get into the training. Now, the first thing I wanted to mention is why is the media important? You know, the media is an extension of communicating with the public. And for cities and public agencies, it provides an added element of transparency, a different place where questions are asked, a different place where information is provided. And so when we talk about, you know, training for interfacing with the media or media training, we're really talking about a form of communication. It is a specialized form of communication, and that's what we're going to get through over the following slides. But really, at its core, media training can help each of you to more effectively communicate your key messages about the city, or about projects, about issues with the media, and also via media representatives, so that you reach the broader audience, which is the community. Now, training like this helps spokespeople to prepare for interviews, to anticipate questions, and to really practice so that they are providing clear answers and clear information. And at the end of the day, that's really what we're looking for, is for the public to receive information that they can use to improve their lives, so they can be updated, and so that everything is provided in a consistent and clear manner. By preparing and rehearsing your key messages, and we will talk about what key messages are, you know, doing this as a regular practice and receiving training like this can help you to focus on the main points that you want to make, that the city as a whole wants to communicate to the public, and that really just ends up making for a smooth process in day-to-day operations. And what are some common goals for a training session? The goals for having effective communication are what I covered in the slide prior to this. But very specific goals, and you can each, you know, kind of think about what is one thing I'd like to come away from with this workshop. Again, you really want to improve your techniques and your performance. It can be pretty nerve-wracking to know that you're about to go in front of a camera, and like Jenna said, sometimes it can seem like it goes a little bit south, but other times you feel really good. I remember to make every point, and I feel like I was able to very clearly communicate. And so you want to constantly improve these techniques. And it is a form of public speaking, but again, it's a very specific form through media interviews. You want to be able to create and convey consistent and concise messages, and that's part of the preparation before you're actually doing the interview. And then you can develop your effectiveness if you're serving as the spokesperson, if people from a particular project or on a particular issue are relying on you to get their information out accurately. You also want to convey your messages to the media in an effective, and we say in a believable way. And so what do I mean by that? Somebody can be very prepared with the information, have all of the key points, can have rehearsed in public speaking, and then, of course, maybe you get in front of a camera. But when you rehearse, and if you ever record yourself or you've seen yourself in an interview, we work with individuals that sometimes are looking off-camera, or, you know, have to practice their pausing and ah, and that maybe looks different when it's in a taped interview. And so that's when we say it's a certain technique to communicate when you're on camera, so that it's believable, so that it's not distracting, some of the things that you might be doing that are not such a big deal when it's just a one-on-one conversation, but come across a little bit differently on camera. And you'll see some examples of that on video. And then ultimately, effective communication, and in a manner that is engaging and not distracting in any way, enhances the credibility, and that really supports the reputation of the city, of all the good work that you're doing. So you don't want anything that could distract. Now, we keep saying the media. So who are we talking about? Because it becomes a little bit nebulous sometimes. Who is the media in this day and age? I talked about newspapers, and so that's where my background is in. And, you know, a lot of us grew up, you get the paper in the morning, and that's where you get all of your information. Then, of course, there's the evening news, so we're talking about the television shows. Sometimes they are more opinion commentary shows, and that's different than just, here's what happened today. We're not going to really put any additional information on top of just reporting what you're seeing out on the field. Radio is a very important component of the media. Now, of course, you're seeing more satellite radio, digital radio, and that gets into the next bullet. A lot of these platforms are really merging together. And so the person who writes for a certain beat on the newspaper might also be the weekend guest on a regular local television show. And then, of course, maybe they have a podcast also. Is that radio? Or, you know, podcasts can become so popular that that really becomes a main channel. Social media, is that a part of the media? Is that an element of when you think, I have a responsibility to speak to the media? You know, yes and no. Information does get amplified through social media, but sometimes you're not exactly sure who you're talking to. It could be an @ handle with a picture that's not exactly a person. And so that's a lot, it's a very challenging environment that everybody's working with these days. And then you get into the comment section, maybe of an article. That can take a whole life of its own. How do you negotiate that? We're going to be talking about that through the different examples. And somebody taking a screenshot of a comment section, sharing it on social media, and then that gets amplified and then gets discussed in detail on a podcast, you can kind of see how all these things really, you know, interplay, work together. And we're going to cover examples of one-on-one interviews with a reporter, as well as the different ways that that information can later be seen and be used. And who are these people? Who are the reporters? Who are the podcast hosts? You know, when we talk about the media and the examples that you're going to be seeing, for the most part, you think of the media as the reporter, right? They come to the public meetings, maybe they cover a specific beat, always taking notes, asking, you know, hey, I'm going to be recording this interview. Then you also have maybe the anchors. They receive information, and then they work with producers to put on a TV segment. It could be the evening news, or it could be a special in-depth review of a very important topic for the public. You have editors at the newspapers, and they may then have their, you know, morning meetings where they're saying, we want to cover the following on this topic. We're going to take this approach. You could say, is that a slant that they're taking on a given topic? Or are they just doing a very deep dive and really want to get a lot of different quotes and look at an issue from many different angles? You have the publishers of newspapers, the owners. They have different pressures and priorities when it comes to the product that is the news, when it comes to, you know, the publication. Then you have maybe the writers, maybe you have a guest writer. They're maybe not a member of the Professional Society of Journalists, and so they don't practice, you know, the media ethics, or they don't have an editor reminding them of this is what's allowed, this is what's not allowed. Or you might have a local activist, business leader, member of the community that writes a regular column or decides to write an op-ed. Are they a member of the media? You know, bloggers are now vloggers. Everything now has a visual component to it. And so do they, are they included as the media? You know, issuing a press pass is maybe not quite what it used to be, where who's allowed to be attending these meetings? You might decide to be streaming a meeting live, but there might be somebody with a bigger audience that is broadcasting themselves through social media. So in that way, does the public, or certain members of the public, become considered part of the media? And on those platforms, of course, we're talking about, you know, Twitter. That's the social media platform, we found, where you do tend to see a lot of media representation reporters, editors. You know, there's a lot of dialogue on that particular platform. Facebook is another. And all of these platforms are bringing on different capabilities, like the live streaming. Instagram, Nextdoor, YouTube, LinkedIn, TikTok. I'm missing a few on here, but I think you're all familiar with all the different places where you can find, quote-unquote, "the media."
Okay, so as Gabby mentioned, we are going to be watching some videos throughout this presentation to kind of give you an idea of interviews that went well and interviews that did not go so well. And this one is actually, we're starting off with a spoof video here, but it's a good example of the kinds of pressures that the media are under these days. So it's important to keep these things in mind when you're working with the media, because just like you are under pressure every day, and it's stressful sometimes when you're being interviewed, they also have all of this stress and pressure on their shoulders. So they're constantly on a deadline, they live and die by the clock. They have pressures to have their videos or articles seen so that they're getting clicks, because advertisers, of course, we need to keep the publication alive. So there's a million things that are contributing to a lot of stress. They're taking on more workload as a lot of these outlets are downsizing. So this kind of gives you an idea of the types of stress that someone might be under.
... lies that many of you are still at home, but if you are heading out this weekend, there is some weekend construction you need to be aware of.
Our new traffic anchor, Anavid Reyes, has a look at this weekend's traffic.
Yes, Veronica, we are out here live. We are at exit 57 on I-24 East. If you're looking at traffic, don't expect too many delays. As you can see out here, things look to be moving along just fine. Over my left shoulder, you can see some minor road construction in the area, but that hasn't affected things much this morning. And oh, by the way, just real quick, my name is pronounced Anavid, not Anavid. So if I'm going to come out here and do these live traffic reports and literally risk my life, I'd appreciate it if somebody back in the studio could learn how to pronounce my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. You got it, Anavid. And what's it look like southbound?
I mean, just like in the grand scheme of life, think about what we're doing right now. I'm doing a live traffic report on television. This traffic report is going to be obsolete in three minutes. I mean, I have a report that there's construction in the area, obviously, as you know, but there's a wreck about a mile ahead. So this is going to be, all this traffic is going to be changed in literally about 60 seconds, so.
It looks like you've got an inside source on that wreck. Have you been in contact with the police chief?
Have I talked to the police chief? No, I have not. I've actually just literally looked on Google Maps. And every time you guys send me out here for a live traffic report, I literally just look on Google Maps, oh, look, traffic. I look on Google Maps and report to you what I see here. And I don't know if you guys knew this back at the station, but every person in America has access to this.
Well, it looks cold. And it sounds like you may have woken up on the wrong side of the bed.
Yeah, I don't know, or woken up on the wrong side of the bed, or most people are still in bed because no one's watching the local news for traffic. Like, in terms of figuring out the best route to work and traffic patterns, I can think of off the top of my head 57 other ways to do this more efficiently. Google Maps, Apple Maps, Bing Maps. My Uncle Ricky still has a TomTom. You can plug the address into that. I don't know. Go to a truck stop and rent a CV and talk to one of these truck drivers. He could probably tell you a better way to know what the traffic is. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why.
Thank you, Anavid.
So obviously, that was an exaggerated example, but it does kind of give you an idea of the types of pressures that media experience every day. So we're going to get into your rights as a spokesperson a little later on in the presentation. But we wanted to start off with media's rights or expectations. And these are points that we've gathered from various professional journalist associations and organizations. So number one, the right to reasonable access to legitimate news sources. And so what do we mean by legitimate news sources? We mean an expert on a topic or a program, or a designated spokesperson for that particular program. The right to have a reporter's deadlines and logistical needs considered. So, I mean, they literally are always on a deadline, whether it's a print publication, or it's the news that's hitting at 5, 6, 7. They're constantly having to get that content in. And so being respectful of that when you're working with them is really important. Logistical needs, we're talking about, that could be anything from providing them with the assets that they need. So maybe they need photos, maybe they need video, maybe they need, you know, facts. Being able to provide that information to them in a timely manner. The right to receive a concise, direct answer to a relevant question. So I'm sure you all have seen interviews where the interviewee is asked a question, and they manage to evade ever providing a real answer. There are times when, you know, reporters might ask something that's off-topic, in which case it is okay to bridge to your main points, and we'll get into that a little bit later. But if you're doing an interview on a mutually agreed-upon topic, it is best practice to provide a direct answer to that question. The right to receive a timely response to an inquiry. Again, that goes back to meeting their deadlines. The right to conduct follow-up inquiries where needed for clarification. So it's not uncommon that you'll do an interview with a reporter, and they may follow up with you a day or two later because, you know, maybe they forgot a question at the time, or maybe there's been an update to the program that they want to get your input on that update. The right to request and receive any non-proprietary and available printed material, photos or videos to flesh out interview information. Again, this is just really not only benefiting them, but you as well, especially if you're trying to promote your program or project. You want to be able to provide them with those assets so you can really round out the overall story. The right to receive corrected information if incorrect information is inadvertently given. So we're going to be trying to help you make sure that you don't give incorrect information when you're doing interviews. However, there are going to be times, maybe you misspoke, maybe you gave the wrong stat, maybe you gave the wrong fact. It's important to make sure that, working with the City Manager's Office, that you follow up with that reporter and you correct that information, because ultimately, you want the story to be factual, and they want it to be factual as well. The right to redirect the discussion beyond the original topic. Conversely, you as the spokesperson have the right to deflect or offer to get back to the reporter. So it's not uncommon that you'll be doing an interview about one topic, and all of a sudden, the interviewer will say, hey, but you know what? I want to talk about X, Y, and Z. That is their right to do, but it's also your right to say, hey, you know what? I appreciate that, but we're here today to talk about X, Y, and Z. Let me take down your question, and I'll get back to you with an answer on this at a later time. But, you know, respectful of their deadlines. The right to evaluate and report the story as the reporter sees fit. So, you know, media are human too. And just like all of us, they're going to come to any story with their own experiences, their own insights. And so you may start to see that there are certain things in a story that are being highlighted based on, you know, how they may see a topic. And that's totally okay, as long as it's factual. You know, that is going to happen on occasion, and it's important as the person who's going to be interviewed for you to really look into their past stories, their publication, and have an idea of what, how have they covered this project in the past? What sorts of things are they interested in? And that can help prepare you for the kinds of questions that may come up so that you can help to make sure that your messages are also being represented in the story. The right to the same kind of courtesy and respect that the newsmaker desires. So this one's basic. It's obviously, it's the golden rule, treat others as how you would like to be treated. All right, let's get into best practices. So this is an example of an interview that I coordinated with our client. And this is for an in-studio live television interview. Obviously, that can be a pretty stressful situation for most people, who, even if you're trained, it's still a little nerve-wracking. So we're going to go through some best practices to hopefully help remove some of those nerves and make you feel confident when you're in front of the camera. So first, we're going to start off with your city's protocol. Working with the City of Temecula in preparation for this training, we were given these specific steps that the city would like you to follow if the media reaches out to you. So first, if you get any sort of inquiry from a reporter, please reach out to your city manager. And then from there, you're going to want to gather as much information as you can before an interview. So that includes information, if it's about a particular project, making sure that you have all those relevant details. Also knowing, have other people from the city already been interviewed for this project? And if there's any other people maybe outside of the city that have been interviewed, so you'll have a better idea of the overall scope of the story and the potential tone. From there, you're going to want to coordinate with your city team. And coordinating based on understanding the project, understanding who is the best spokesperson for this project, gathering all the relevant information that you may need to pass on to the reporter, if that's fact sheets, if that's photos, if that's videos, and then determining the logistics. So is this going to be a live interview? Is this going to be print? Is this going to be taped? And having all of those items in place so that there's really no surprises when the interview takes place. So what makes something newsworthy? Some of these, I think, are pretty obvious, but some may not, might not be. So timeliness, right? Immediate, current information, events are newsworthy because they recently occurred. We're probably not going to be as interested in something that happened maybe a month ago, or maybe not interested, but the paper probably is not going to run it. Proximity. So local information, events are newsworthy because they affect the people in our community and our region. So you're probably more interested in something that's happening in Temecula than, say, maybe an event that's happening in Riverside. Conflict and controversy. When violence strikes, God forbid, or people argue, we obviously care about this. Conflict and controversy attract our attention by highlighting issues or differences within the community. And then there's human interest. We are interested in other people and identify with their struggles, and we applaud their amazing feats. So, and it's, for instance, you know, maybe there's a woman who lives in Temecula who finished an Iron Man challenge. Maybe that's a profile in the local press enterprise that could be featured. Relevance. We are attracted to information that helps us make good decisions. So, for instance, I like to cook. So I pulled this one out because I guarantee you, it's Sunday paper, I'd be looking for new recipes for fall donuts. So to me, that's interesting. Or if you're looking for a new job, the business news could be relevant to you. So when you're going into an interview, you want to remember and view every interview as an opportunity to really convey your key messages, explain your position, and forward your cause. That's really the strategy and approach you need to have with every single interview. It's also very important to distance yourself from personal feelings and opinions toward the reporter. I have had, on multiple occasions, worked with different clients where a story has come out about their organization or their city, and they haven't been pleased with the angle of the story. And have said, you know, I don't want to talk to that reporter anymore. I'm blacklisting that reporter. And I've said to them, you know, that's one approach, but we're losing an opportunity to make sure that our views are included in this topic. So let's try and distance ourselves from those feelings, and let's look at how we can work with the media to make sure that our voice is still being heard. And are there any questions about... And are there any questions about that section?
And of course, you know, it's human interaction. And so you're going to see reporters at events. If they have a quick question for you, that might not be the time to say, hold on a second, let me reach out, let me find maybe the city manager or another department manager and check with them. You know, you're going to be friendly, you're going to talk. But when you start to get questions that, you know, you have the right, just like Jenna covered, what is understood as the media's rights. This is, the journalistic organizations have their code of conduct and all the different things that they abide by. You know, media ethics, when they're members of these organizations, or when they studied this in college, the profession of journalism. But then this is what's understood of public agencies more so than private agencies. They're expecting to ask for an interview that they're not going to be sent to whoever happens to be at that site, maybe doesn't know about the particular project. They have the right to ask, but you have the right to say, you know what? We're not going to do that interview. And so it's a two-way street. When you start to get questions that seem like, oh, wait, this is kind of feeling like an interview. Have you talked to anybody else at the city? Or let me get your information? And that's when you want to take a moment and, you know, check in. As a former reporter myself, it would not be uncommon for me to do an interview and then say, you know what? I'm going to talk to a person from another department. I wonder what they have to say. And if there ends up being conflict in what the two department heads or what the elected official said that was different from the police chief, then I've got an even bigger story than what I was planning on covering. And so there is a lot of the human interaction of, you know, kind of feeling your way through your interactions with the media. And you're going to see that through some more examples.
I have a comment, and that is, in a very limited market, and we are in a very limited market. We know all of our reporters, and there are probably five of them, maybe fewer. But the issue is that everyone is a reporter now. Everyone that has access to a computer, a phone, or anything that can be on the internet. So you get to know reporters after a while, and truly, and I respect the fact that you're saying they want to get to the truth. They don't always want to get to the truth. They want to sensationalize or just highlight certain parts of your comments. And so I think that's an ongoing challenge. So it's really a cat and mouse game on both sides. And we get to know them as people. They know us as people. Some of them have been around forever. And, you know, we can like them, and they can like us. But I think, as you said, they're under pressure to bring that story. And unfortunately, today, that's going to be mostly, I think, a sensational story. So the days of Walter Cronkite, and I'm dating myself, you know, and those types of reporters, those days are really over. So I think we need to recognize that and respectfully deal with them as people that we know in our daily lives, as well as reporters. And the other thing is, there's never anything that's off the record, ever. So, you know, we need to be aware of that too. And then how do we hold them accountable? That's a big question. To rebut or not to rebut? Because we very often say, no, it's not worth it because we're just going to bring attention to the negative thing that was printed. Or obviously inaccuracies in numbers and statistics and data, things like that, you're going to rebut. But you have a lot on your plate today.
And you've already covered on a few things that are coming up. So you're going to see, you know, points for making some of the points that we are going to be touching on. Yeah, you know, it's a whole process. And you can have, in a sense, a media engagement strategy as part of your work to be effective in public engagement. And sometimes it is, you know, there are certain times we do an interview, or we wait until we're having our ribbon cutting or our grand ceremony. And that's the time when we have all the information, the press release is put together. We don't need to be doing interviews before that. Again, it's, you take it on a case-by-case basis, but you're absolutely right. Even though there are media ethics, anybody with a camera could pick something up or could post it on social media without any particular repercussions, and then the media can pick up on that. A lot of what we're going to be talking about is what is under your control. And so what are the things that you can not do on the comment section? Or what are some of the things that can help you to make sure that you're not misunderstood? If there is audio picked up somewhere, if you are giving an interview and you're not quite sure, oh, this person's no longer with this publication. They're actually now writing for a separate side project that they have. So that's a lot of what we'll touch on. But it is, you know, human relations at the end of the day. It's just in this day and age, it's human relations with global amplification. And you'll see some people that have, you know, some examples we have of how they got ensnared with, all of a sudden, their comment became global. And then what are some ways that you can also deal with it after that point?
I was just going to mention too, I think there's a difference between an angle that might be unflattering and facts that are just incorrect. And so I think there absolutely, if facts are incorrect, it's very important to contact that publication and ask for corrections. I think there's also, you know, there's opportunities to write op-eds or letters to the editor which really allow you to, you know, explain your position on a particular topic and make sure that your voice is really being heard in the way that you want it to be.
And within the industry, there is nothing worse for a media outlet. It's part of their responsibility, and it is something they take seriously, but to have to run a correction and to have to correct what the reporting was. So the more that you stick to the facts, the easier it is to just stay focused on. And sometimes it is an honest mistake. And Jenna and I do a lot of that. We've never done a TV segment, a news article, where there wasn't something that it just wasn't, it was misunderstood, it wasn't reported correctly. And then we kind of navigate, do we want to call and ask for three corrections? But when it's something that's factual, and it's actually, you know, the public has to have this correct information, or the public record needs to reflect that that was not the amount of funding, or, you know, whatever. That's not the address of the new facility. That is one way to, you know, if you want to say, hold them accountable, or just to hold everybody accountable of, there have to be corrections. And I know that reporters amongst themselves will kind of kid on each other, like, how many corrections did you have to run, you know, this month? And so that's something, I think that's a good common ground of, hey, we're at least going to get the information correct for the readers, for the viewers, you know, because the public does rely on that information.
And there have been periods of time when we required of the media to send us written questions. So we had all our responses on paper. And that continued for a certain amount of time until we felt like that they'd been, you know, called on the carpet enough that, you know, we talked to people in person. But, and those are extreme measures, of course, but yes.
Well, we'll have some examples where, you know, that's a good practice. And so, yeah, we'll kind of touch on, you end up doing, I think, a hybrid. And again, there are these, you know, human relationships.
Councilmember Schwenk has a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, so just, I guess, in the spirit of dialogue, and I think this has a lot to do with just our media market. It is a pretty diminished media market. We do get their traditional, you know, emails for, you know, stories or whatnot. But I think we also need to just be mindful that people are just watching the council meeting, and they'll write a story based on comments, you know, on a project or whatever happened. So we have this grand strategy for when these emails come in. But, you know, the second
Too late.
...
Too late.
... And, you know, we just need to be mindful of that, as that's really where we're going, where people are, reporters are just watching the council meeting, and, you know, the story comes out the next day.
And everything we say is a headline. Everything is a potential headline. And oh, by the way, the headline writers are different than the people who write the stories.
Exactly. That was often a frustrating thing. I would do an interview, and then the headline was not what I would have written, and it's not what the person understood was going to be the main focus, or it wasn't the main thing. But again, it's a product to a certain extent.
Or it has nothing to do with the story.
Yeah. But it catches the attention. And then people read the lead, and then maybe the really important information is on, you know, page A13 or somewhere down the line. But to your point about, you know, anybody can just watch a meeting, quote it, put a slant on it. It's sometimes frustrating for the media platforms themselves that they don't get as much traction as a Facebook thread. And that, I mean, really, it's, you know, everybody in this room, we're living through an incredibly challenging time. Never before has any one person had that much of reach. Never before are people just consuming so much information, whether it's good or bad for us, is it really benefiting us? So, you know, it is good to kind of take a moment and realize, wow, I'm living through this. Every city is facing this, every elected official. The public is starting to really reconcile with, okay, where am I getting my information? And what do I think of facts and whatnot? And so then you just, you really, like you said, you've had a strategy, you adjusted it. And that's really very good that you're understanding. It kind of comes in phases. And then you're, you know, working together to come to an agreement. That's really the most important thing. Because if you think you have a strategy, but every other representative has a different strategy, that's going to be frustrating for everybody. All right, anything else? And we'll, again, we'll have more Q and A along the way.
I have three pages, but I'll wait.
I'm going to skip through some points because you already made them in the Q and A. Okay, so what can you, oh, I think maybe the microphone is still on? Okay, there we go. Maybe from the video, it was a little bit loud. So what are some things that you can do to prepare yourself? You know, first and foremost, you want to know the subject matter. You don't want to be put in front of a reporter who has a specific beat, who's been doing investigative, very deep dive, and you really haven't been prepared or haven't been briefed. And so we'll talk in a little bit also about who serves as the spokesperson. But first and foremost, you really want it to be a topic that you're comfortable in. You know, when you're doing, sometimes you do have new reporters. And so we're seeing that quite a bit. People retire, or there's somebody who's almost a community member that is given a column, and now they're writing about something representing a public, a publication. So it's okay to take the initiative, and instead of just waiting for every question, we'll show you some techniques where you can say, you know what we're finding the public is asking a lot about? And you can use that as a way to, you know, help the reporter kind of really get a little deeper on the issue, or just provide additional information that you think is important. And then, you know, it's important to demonstrate your expertise, not just in the subject matter, but as a caring leader. And so whenever you can come up with these personal examples that are factually correct, but they really go a little bit deeper in showing, hey, I've lived in this community, you know, for however many generations. And so there's a balance to that, and we'll talk about how personal to get. But that's something that, you know, it can be an approach of, I not only know about this particular subject matter, but I have a really deep connection. And I want the reporter, and I want the article to convey that to some extent. And then you want to be very clear and genuine. You don't want to know so much about the subject matter or get an update that you're talking in way too much jargon and the acronyms. And that's a lot of when we rehearse for a specific interview. We find ourselves having to tell an official, people don't know what that means, you know? And so you find a way to really talk about it more in layman's terms. And then these are some tactics. You know, we talked about the media rights to ask for information, to tell you they're on deadline. That doesn't mean you're going to drop everything. And, but you at least take that into account, and you are aware of the pressures that they are coming from and the way that they are doing their job. So we think it's a good tactic to be responsive and to be accessible. You might be accessible in saying, you know what? We'd like to cover that topic with you, but we're going to get all the information prepared, and this is the person that is best to speak. And so the city's being accessible and responsive, but you're not doing it in the moment. And you're not, you know, either saying no comment or providing the quote right there. You don't have to, it doesn't have to be one extreme or the other. Another tactic is to prepare key messages and review them and stick to them. That's difficult because that's not common communication-conversation etiquette, to keep repeating the same thing. That could get annoying. If you were out to lunch with your friend, you know, they might say, okay, I want to talk about something else. But that's a tactic that really does, you know, keep you on focus.
We're dealing with five independent council members, period.
Exactly. Exactly. And so is there a way to come up? And we'll give you an example of what could be a key message that everybody agrees to. And when you're just focused on the facts, you know, the new facility's here, these are the operating hours, and this is a new program that's going to benefit everybody. You know, so that's the kind of work that you can do ahead of time to prepare. And then we're going to give some examples of how you don't want to repeat a negative. There's so much negative information, so many different quotes that are going to be brought to you. Simply repeating that negative, now the words have come out of your mouth, and now that can be perceived as a quote that was given.
I was really apprehensive about you being here today. But, and it's the but that's never
Exactly. And I hate to say again, as a former reporter, you know, sometimes it was like, wait, did they really say that? You know, and even though it wasn't what they meant, somebody else is going to edit it, and then that becomes what gets quoted. So here's an example of how, when you repeat the negative, that can become the story. And so this is Quentin Tarantino. He does not want to talk about a particular topic, and he makes that known by talking a lot about that topic.
Interesting that you have a different view, and I'm just trying to explore. And I don't want to. Because I'm here to sell my movie. This is a commercial for the movie, make no mistake.
Were you on interviews?
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't want to talk about anything serious?
Yeah, I don't want to talk about what you want to talk about. I don't want to talk about the implications of violence. I haven't wanted, because, and the reason I don't want to talk about it is because I've said everything I have to say about it. If anyone cares what I have to say about it, they can Google me. And they can look for 20 years what I have to say about it. I haven't changed my eye, my choice, my opinion, one iota.
No, but you haven't fleshed it out.
It's not my job to flesh it out.
No, it's my job to try and ask you to.
And I'm shutting your butt down.
Why did the BBC deceive the British public?
That's a good example of, you know, the implications of violence. So there's, the words did not need to come out of his mouth. Because now people do want to Google, oh, this upset him so much that I wonder what the story was behind that, you know, decade after decade. And so that can be something where it does not end up serving you in the best way possible. Now here is another example of an approach where negativity is not just always that you are repeating the negative question that somebody had. You know, there can be kind of a negative overtone, and it's hard, like Jenna said. Sometimes it's a story that you felt was really unfair. And so, but, you know, but you said, okay, I agree. We're still going to try to be part of the coverage, and we're going to get our message out there. You know, and then you maybe do some rehearsing, try not to cross your arms. You're going to see how the negativity can come across through body language. And at the end of the day, a new person who's moved to the community, who's watching the news, has no idea of any of the background, they can kind of see as that is being expressed to them. And so it's interesting how that dynamic happens. But here, take a look at this.
Carla De Levine is in the movie. She joins us live from New York City to talk about Paper Towns. Cara, good morning.
Hey.
Hi, how you doing?
We're doing all right. Nice to have you here. So the movie is based on a bestselling book by John Green. You play Margot, the star character there. Did you get a chance, the book is taught, I know in a lot of high schools and such. Did you get a chance to read it, or do you even have time to sit and read? These days you're so busy.
No, I never read the book, or the script, actually. I kind of winged it.
Yeah.
No, of course, I love the book. I think the book's amazing. John Green is an incredible, so really, if you haven't read his books, you should. They're really, don't miss him.
You know, I'm wondering, looking at, as Marian was talking about how busy you are, and looking at your IMDB and all the projects, it's like you are doing one thing after the next, after the next. Do you find that it's easier for you to focus because you're so busy? If you had downtime, maybe it wouldn't be so easy for you? What do you think?
No, I don't know where that comes from. No, I think it's not easier to focus. I think, I mean, I love what I do. It's, it's not crazy. You know, I mean, it's, it's my passion, all of these things. You know, I've wanted to do this since I was young, so it's not, it's not too hard.
Not too hard? All right.
Yeah. What do you like about Margot?
I'm living my dream.
Specifically. Do you have anything in common with her?
No, I actually hate her. Yeah, I mean, of course, we have a lot in common. You know, we connected because I think a lot of the script, I'd read some of the lines, and I'd said them before, and weird coincidences like that. But again, you know, I watched the film, and if it was me, if I was actually Margot, the whole movie would be different.
Oh, really?
Different as well.
Hey, you know, hey, I want to jump in here. First of all, I love the movie. I love the author. I know I'm out of the demo, but I still really dig this movie. This is the teenager I always wanted to be because they're eloquent. They speak like middle-aged screenwriters rather than the awkward, dopey adolescent that I was. So I love it. Now, with that said, I saw you in London talking a couple weeks ago on TV, and you seemed a lot more excited about it than you do right now. Are you just exhausted?
Oh, no. I mean, I'm still very excited. You know, the premiere was last night. It was an emotional, it was an emotional night. It felt like the end of an era. But I'm not any less excited than I was a couple of weeks ago. Maybe I had a bit more energy. It's the morning.
You do seem a bit irritated. Perhaps it's just us.
No, I think it's just you.
I think it probably is us. But on that note
We figured as much. We figured as much.
We'll let you go then. How about that? We'll let you go take a little nap, maybe get a Red Bull. How about that?
Cara De Levine, thank you so much for your time. Paper Towns coming up too. And she's also in that Taylor Swift video, Bad Blood. Everybody probably recognizes her from that as well.
Yes, rush out and see it, won't you?
It's a good movie. That's so funny. Let's tune in and see what she, oh!
Ooh, wow. She was in a mood.
She, man, when, uh...
Geez Louise, everything's sarcastic.
So that's kind of not fair. It is early in the morning, it's tough. But again, she was there to talk about how much she loved the script, how much she loved the author, she's representing, you know, the author's work. And so this is just an example how body, of course, nobody's going to be rolling their eyes, and some of this was maybe, you know, some of the young adult angst. But really, that is what sometimes communicates, even though you're talking and you've got your key messages. This became a hostile interview, and you never know what the background might have been, right? And so this is just a good example of, you don't want to be the person caught looking like, and then that does translate over to the viewers, because now the viewers are seeing that as like, she's, why is she doing the interview if I'm taking the time to watch it, and she doesn't seem to even want to be there? So what are some things to avoid? So this is, you know, the, the big red Xs of, these are the things we're going to try not to do. Defensiveness. And so that's, again, when you kind of bring your personal emotions, it's hard to not be defensive, when you're getting maybe questions that don't seem fair, but it doesn't, that's not going to represent you in the best way. Try to avoid criticizing the individual reporter, or criticizing the media platform. You are absolutely right, Mayor. Off the record is, that is for the pros who are negotiating that through the attorneys. A lot of people have gotten in trouble by emailing information to reporters, saying, I want this to be off the record, but you need to know the following. You know, it is not off the record unless the reporter and the outlet have agreed that the information will be provided off the record. Then there is, are we using you as deep background? Are we going to quote an official of a certain, you know, position within the agency, or are you just a source? We, we even don't really get into that. We don't get into off the record. It's a legal term, it's something that can be very easily misunderstood, and the reality is, sometimes it's not adhered to. And so that's a good way for you to inadvertently get, you know, very burned, if you will, or really have the outcome not be what you want. We really try to avoid no comment. You know, you see it on TV news, no comment, no comment, and then, of course, that is what gets run. And so there's some other strategies, or some other terms you can use other than no comment. We also think you should avoid speculative questions, answering the what if, or well, what would you do? And there's some different techniques you can do to not get led down that path. And then we really urge you to avoid responding on other people's behalfs. That's a very common thing. Did you know so-and-so said the following? And then they're really wanting to get your reaction to that, and you probably wouldn't want somebody to speak on your behalf, and so it's something to be mindful of, you don't want to do that to others. So what can you do in avoiding these common pitfalls? Instead of being defensive, find a way to be responsive. You know, somebody must have a question somewhere in here, and I've got some information that I want to provide and get it out to the public. So look for the way that you can be responsive, try to get a question based on facts, and then you can provide the answer. Instead of criticizing that individual reporter or media, you can say, well, they do have a pretty big following, there are members of the community that do value this particular platform, and so I want to make sure that the information that we're providing is provided to those individuals, and to all those different families and business owners. And so I'm going to do the interview, you know, keep the personal thoughts to myself, but I'm going to utilize this platform to help the information get out there, because it's an important project, or this is valuable facts and information that I have. We talked about there's no to-do with any of this off the record. You simply don't do it. Instead of saying no comment, there's so many different things that you can offer, and we're going to give some examples. You know, you can say, we're going to have some updates for you, or you can say, you know, at this, at this time, I don't have that factual information, but we're pulling it together, and we're aware of your deadline. There's all sorts of things that you can say, instead of trying, you know, the no comment. And then, instead of getting pulled into speculative questions, again, go right back to your facts. If somebody tries to, well, what would happen, or what if? You can say, well, you know, what we have before us right now are the facts that I want to make sure that your readers or that your viewers become informed by. And then if you're being asked to respond on somebody else's behalf, or respond to somebody else's comment, you can bridge back to your own messages. You're going to go back to what you do want to be quoted as saying. And again, that's all fact-based. So any questions with these different techniques?
Yeah, I just, so the no comment, if we could expand on that just, just a little bit, like, and I'll just throw out an example, like, things happen regionally around here, and, and this isn't so much directed at interactions with reporters, but maybe the public, right? So if something regionally happens, everyone wants, or there's this feeling that everyone wants elected officials to make a statement or make a comment, right? And there are many things that happen that are outside of, like, this room, this purview of the city, that, see, don't deserve a comment is, is not maybe the best use of words, but...
Well, it's not a jurisdiction.
We don't have an obligation, right? So, so how do you offer something? Let's say something happens, you know, regionally, another entity, a school district, or another city, or something like that. So how do you offer something that doesn't upset, essentially in today's world, where everything is so like, if you don't say something now, you, you're, you need to, and then doesn't get drug through the media, because this person now said something, right? There's half of our community or our region that thinks one way and half the other. So how do you offer something?
And your quote inadvertently then gets used, and then that can create a big headache for you.
I like to provide referrals to whoever there.
Exactly. You know, again, if you stick to the facts, and the fact might be of, this is not a policy that we're implementing at this time, if you have a little bit of that responsiveness, that's a really important issue, and we're tracking it just as you are. But it is the jurisdiction of the governor, and so we are tracking what they are implementing, and we will have some information when it becomes something that affects the policies that we are going to be putting into place. And so you, you know, you can offer something, and really just think about, sometimes it's, the person asking the question may not be clear on whose jurisdiction it is. Or the person asking the question may say, well, the other council member said the following. You don't need to get dragged into that. You can say, oh, okay, well, my understanding is this is the jurisdiction of the county government. And I know they're putting out some really good information on, I don't know if you're aware, this is the webpage where I'm getting all of the updates, we're getting updates from our department manager, our city manager, and so at this time, I'm receiving all the information as well. Well, what do you think about it? Well, what I think is that we need to have all the information so we understand exactly how this issue is developing, and it is an evolving issue. And so I, I need to also have updated information. I don't want to give you inaccurate, and I certainly don't want people to think that this is something we're implementing here. You know, and so it kind of starts to become a practice. The person's not going to love you, they're going to maybe poke a little more, and so maybe that doesn't quite feel good, but at least you know that every single thing that you said is something that you're, you're comfortable with whoever ends up quoting it or posting it somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Matt.
So you mentioned responding on others' behalf, so I have a slightly different twist on that one, is responding on behalf of the city when it's not the city's message, right? So I think internally with, you know, if somebody calls up Pat's office and says, we have a question about a road construction project, I mean, internally messaging is coordinated. Externally, with the council, we're five individuals who can say kind of whatever we want to at any given moment, right?
And do, sometimes.
And, and sometimes do. And so I'm wondering, you know, so typically, a lot of the messaging happens through the mayor's office, or, you know, a council member who may be intimately involved with a project or issue. But, you know, and maybe this is more of a conversation, you know, of an internal council policy, but, you know, how, how do you distinguish when an elected official is speaking on behalf of the city versus just their, their own opinion?
Well, the media often will take that quote, and that becomes a official statement. And so if I'm the reporter, or if I'm the Facebook poster, I will take that quote, and I've got video of the person saying it, and that can become the official statement. And so I think a good strategy, you know, internally, is to always use the resources that the departments put together.
The white sheet.
You know that's factual information. Yeah, that's why it's called a fact sheet. You know, let me, let me repeat, and let me go through the information that's posted here, that everybody is clear on, it's the latest version. That's a good strategy, is to stay focused on the accurate information. If you're going to have individuals, you know, kind of providing their own comment, and, and trust me, my husband hates when I speak on his behalf. I don't think I'm doing it. I'll write, like, Steve and I had such a great time at this thing, and then I post my picture, he's like, don't quote, I didn't have a great time. You're speaking for me. And so again, it's this human relation of, you know, it, it's just something that happens without maybe somebody meaning for it to be something that's negative. But if you're going to stray from the fact sheet, or from the information that's publicly posted, then what you can say is, look, this is just my own, you know, personal comment, and so I certainly don't want it to be taken aside from the information that the city is providing, but I'm personally excited about this. And as you start to qualify things in that way, as you get into that discipline, even in that moment, you're kind of like not going to go off the handle to say something, because as you're saying, okay, let me just tell you, and again, this is just me personally speaking, this is not, you know, the city has really great information that they've released, I'll go a step beyond that and say, I do hope this program passes. Or, you know, maybe you go, but you're, you're quantifying it in that way, of like making clear, I am going a step beyond. And usually you'll catch yourself in that moment and say, maybe I don't want to, you know, give too much information here, because this is what could get quoted.
We got the Brown Act to consider.
Yeah, but in the event that that doesn't happen, and you don't qualify your responses, what can the city do to protect its own integrity from, you know, a rogue council member who says something that doesn't align with, you know, the city's position?
Well, at that point, you're being responsive, right? So then, you know, because then maybe questions come in, it creates a misunderstanding. And then some calls start coming in of, wait, I thought we were doing this, and now it seems like the city's doing something else. And so I think, you know, that's where you can take an example, or you can say, okay, what could we have done better, because we're spending a lot of staff resources, or now we're consumed by this issue that we thought had been concluded, and we kind of know what we're doing with this particular program. And, you know, you kind of look at it as like a resource of time, of how do we avoid this from happening in the future? Because a lot of times, the person that kind of got ahead of themselves and spoke, that's not the best, you know, people regret what they've said, and that's a lot of what we hear. Someone's like, I don't know why I said that, it was a one-hour interview, and they picked up on that one thing. And so by doing trainings like this, it can really make you think about, you know, I can have a shorter interview, I can be more prepared, I can have all the information ahead of myself, and I can be a little bit more disciplined in what I'm saying, because I've seen how it comes back around. And sometimes it just takes a couple of, you know, experiences that people weren't too crazy about, to then start to get more disciplined as, as a unit.
Okay, thanks.
And we have to rely on the media to print, or upload, or broadcast the city's comments as opposed to, that, that may be in opposition to what was stated by a council member, which is, you know, that's uncomfortable, and many times they just don't, they aren't going to follow that storyline. They're going to follow the controversial storyline. There's nothing we can do other than be out there and present the facts.
Because everybody has access to the fact sheet, to the information, but the reporter does, they do have those competitive pressures, and they want to have the unique different, they don't really care if it's a positive or a negative, it's just something that there's a little bit of conflict there, it's different, and they will get people then following, wait a minute, there seems to be a little bit more nuance over here. And so again, I think as a, as a unit, when you...
Nuance, that's a good term.
Yeah, so when you look at it as, kind of take a step back and say, we understand how things can be, you know, kind of led in a different way, and that doesn't end up serving us in the long term. And our staff works so hard, and then it creates more work, and, okay, how do we try to avoid that with a future project?
And for the record, the city manager's exceptional in providing us multiple daily updates on things, so, and all the facts are available to us, we just need to ask questions.
And that is a best practice, is to, he's kind of the central clearinghouse, right? Sometimes we see that with a PIO, it's, you know, generally the same idea with public agencies, but yeah, it never hurts to check in, you'll get some information, so you'll be better prepared, and then you're really speaking with one voice, and then it's not something that you're having to feel like go back and get corrections with.
Zach, you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, and really just a comment to sort of, to add on to this conversation, at the end of the day, and, and we've had this, had this discussion before, at the end of the day, there's the public, and then the, the balance of the council really, to sort of hold each other to that standard, right? And either have that conversation, hey, what you said was inappropriate, or, you know, here's the actual fact, you know, that statement that you made wasn't true. At the end of the day, really, it falls back on the, the council as a whole to, if I say something and I go rogue, I would expect the mayor to come and say, hey, listen, you, you misspoke, or you, you, you didn't really portray the city in the best light. You know, so I think, I mean, again, it just boils down to us holding each other accountable, and whether that's in an official policy, or just sort of the code of conduct of council is really where we're going to have to land with this one.
Yeah, and learning from experiences together, you know, you are getting training like this, you can do a huddle and prepare, and then just getting better and better. Nobody likes misunderstandings. The public, there's nothing worse of, wait, I thought the newspaper said this, but are they not going to have the construction? But then somebody said, regardless of the topic, and how somebody might feel about an issue, or support or not support a project, nobody likes misunderstandings. It doesn't feel good. You, you end up getting frustrated, of like, okay, so now I'm not sure what's going on. And that is just the scenario you want to avoid for everybody.
Well, and I was just going to add to, you know, the city has its own media channels, so if there ever is a situation like that, there is the opportunity to issue a statement on your website, on your social media, you can, you know, interact with your public and your constituents directly. I do think it is still important, though, on those occasions, to issue that statement to the press. Even if they don't run it, at least they're in the loop, and they fully understand, you know, where a current project might stand.
And we can always refer them to the, to our sources that are accurate.
Right.
Matt?
So, so following up on that, then, you know, we mentioned earlier, this sort of transition away from focused local media to sort of broader platforms, satellite radio, and, you know, online media. Most of our newspapers, you know, we don't have a Temecula-specific outlet, we have regional outlets that cover multiple cities, right? News, you know, stations, TV stations, you know, aside from, what, Channel 3? I mean, you know, like, it's not like we're, you know, we're, we're, we're in a much larger outlet for, for information. And so it's interesting, because you mentioned the press release, you know, piece, and, and we do, do a lot of press releases, and we watch, you know, whether it's a, you know, major law enforcement action, or a project going on in the city, or whatever, and then you look at the, you know, Sunday paper, and they're reporting about a donut shop, and you're thinking to yourself, so much more happened in Temecula this week, and we get a story on a donut shop, right? And, I mean, you know, and we can put all the press releases we want to out there, but if people are relying on, you know, our newspapers or other for, for their information, they're missing a lot of good information. And I don't expect, you know, our residents to tune in every other Tuesday to watch, you know, those exciting council meetings. So, I, I, you know, so how do we, how do we make sure we get that? Because I think that's one of our biggest challenges, really, is what we think are the most important issues for the city that we would want our residents to know, often don't get traction on social media, or don't even get picked up in the, in the news.
But the controversy does.
Yeah.
Obviously, and that's always, you know, that's typical, and it's very frustrating.
But you're right, other things might get picked up, and you're thinking, wait, who, this doesn't seem to impact that many people. However, the, the police chief's, you know, press release would impact a lot of people. You know, that's where you can have some positive relationships with some of the platforms, and you can say, hey, if you guys could share some of this information, we again, just want to make sure that the public is getting accurate. That can be an approach, if there are certain, you know, the chamber sometimes, there's one individual maybe that has a lot of relationships, and they can help to put something out there, that can then encourage the media, oh, the public's talking about this, we also want to cover it. A lot of the news platforms feel like they need to cover something different than what all the others are posting. And so that then, that really does become a challenge. Um, we have different things for projects where if we feel like we're not going to get coverage, a really great graphic. Um, or you may have some video of the project and you package that up in a way that's, again, it's going to catch the attention. People will see it and oh, what is this about? Just because it has a, you know, a GIF or a GIF. And so you put that out with your press release and we're seeing that that's something that at least gets it posted. And then people read about, what did, what am I seeing here? So there's different approaches like that.
You know, we need to be strategic in the way that we conduct ribbon cuttings or, or, you know, when we reveal art pieces and things like that, because if we create that interesting or fun atmosphere, you know, the mayor high fiving, you know, jumping off the ground or whatever, those are the things that are going to be published.
We had a new facility that had a bathroom and it was like the cut, you know, a toilet paper. And now, oh my gosh, is this really, you know, is this going to look weird? But it was different. And so people then took a look and like, oh, that's that new sports center or that, or they finally did that work at the park. Um, you know, we've done ribbon cuttings for pump stations, which you, but the public actually, it benefits them to know, do you know what a sewage pump station is?
We all show up with plungers.
Exactly.
I was just going to mention too, I know with social media, it's challenging these days because so much of it is pay to play. If you're not paying for ads, if you're not boosting those posts, you're not going to get that interaction that you want. One strategy that we've taken for a lot of our clients is we will join community Facebook groups as a city or as a program. And the amount of interaction that you get in those community Facebook, Facebook groups is really astonishing. People are really engaged. You're not dealing with the, you know, the pay to play aspect when you're in there. Uh, and I mean, we, the amount of impressions that we've seen for some of the posts that we've done, because they're just, the, the public's engaged. They want to hear. They want to know what you're doing. They want to, you know, stay informed.
Yeah, we do that.
So it's great strategy.
Yeah. And it's a good place to say, oh, everyone has questions about this FYI, all the information is on this page. If you want to know the hours of operation.
And post multiple times during the day as your feed disappears.
And that's the tricky thing where it's a constant world of refresh and scroll and, and we'll talk about attention spans. Okay. So now let's move away from the social media, um, you know, minute to minute cycle and talk about when you're serving as a spokesperson. So this could be maybe a project over a long series of time or we're getting more into the, uh, we're going to be doing an interview and it is going to have maybe a regional or broader reach. Um, so when we use the term spokesperson, what exactly does that mean? Um, you know, the dictionary term is a person who speaks as the representative of another person, um, company or of others, often in a professional capacity. And the key word for me in this definition is the word often. Um, you know, people are professional spokespeople and that's who you see sometimes on the evening news. And they do these different techniques of, you know, bridging over. It doesn't seem like they're answering the question. And there's just a lot of, um, you know, different communication styles for an official spokesperson. Um, for most public agencies, that's not, that's not your full-time job. Um, but you do want to be effective as a spokesperson in communicating information about a particular project. Um, so, you know, how does the city select somebody to serve as a quote unquote spokesperson? And that's when you really want to be centralized of, this is going to be the individual or the person that's going to be providing information. Um, you know, one, you want to select somebody that has authority, somebody that the public will recognize, oh, this is a decision maker. This is a person that has leadership, um, within the public agency. Um, ideally, of course, you want to have somebody who has received training, um, who has rehearsed some of the techniques so that they're going to do an effective job of serving as that spokesperson. Um, you want somebody who understands how to stay on message and again, who has rehearsed that. That's going to be very effective to be an effective spokesperson and somebody who is jargon free. Somebody who has practiced not, um, being accurate with jargon, but using the jargon and having so much of it that the end user, the public doesn't fully understand what is being conveyed. And then we have also, we look for a match for the medium. Um, if you're going to receive publication in English and Spanish coverage, it's nice to have somebody who is bilingual. So everything doesn't have to be translated. Um, if you have somebody who does great and in-depth, sit down and provide a lot of background information. Uh, maybe they're a match for a, you know, print article. But if it's somebody who fidgets a lot, a lot of ums, that's a lot of what we work with and everybody, I work with that. I'm sure I've said it a few times. Um, or, um, there I am. Or, you know, sometimes we got people who just have, you know, they look off camera and we, you know, that's just not the best person for, um, you know, a quick media segment where you really want the person to be focused. Um, the images that you see, and I did, now I'm going to be doing it all the time. The images that you see here on the slide are the City of Oceanside's Utility Director. That was an interview that happened this last Friday about a water project. And so that was the person that of course has authority about the particular, uh, water program that was being discussed in depth. Channel 10 came out and needed a spokesperson because they wanted to tour the new facility and they wanted to provide a lot of information on that evening's news.
Again, if I can just, just interrupt and say that we have, you know, city manager and our department heads are wonderful. And if the media goes to them, then, you know, they are very good about doing the facts. But typically, and I've been here, what, thirty-two, four years, something like that, council members want to answer. And I think I can respond, you know, I can say for all of us that we, we want to be that spokesperson. And I, I realize that that makes it a challenge times five. So, um, wouldn't you say that when we can, we would like to be the ones that, that answer the questions?
And the public, when we say, you know, authority, so the top picture is the mayor of Chula Vista, Mary Salas. Even though this particular, um, you know, discussion of economic development was for a podcast up in Seattle, uh, because it involved some investments, um, for Amazon warehouses down in the Chula Vista area. Uh, you know, the mayor was the spokesperson and that is who the public was used to seeing, um, you know, provide information about new initiatives or historical. Um, so then it was just a matter of making sure that the person is rehearsed, has the latest information. So you don't want to be surprised by the, the interviewer having a more updated piece of information than what you rehearsed last week.
So again, it's an internal, it really is an internal issue. I mean, you know, if council members are going to honor that and allow the mayor to be the spokesperson or whatever.
Well, I guess maybe I have a little bit different perspective because, you know, I, I like saying, you know, interviews like that where you have a, uh, an expert who's representing the topic area, right? And, and council, I think historically, and, and you know, it's not just our city. Most cities like to do this. I mean, it's, you know, politicians and elected officials like to be in front of the camera. Um, but they're always, um, they're not always the best representative and certainly not a, a subject matter expert, uh, in, in most cases. And so, you know, again, maybe as we're thinking about council policy, uh, that becomes, you know, one of the things that we, we focus on because it, it's nice, I think the public, everybody likes to see the mayor or council member say, you know, a few words. But, you know, uh, go back to Public Works or, or, you know, Development Services or something. And these folks are working on this a hundred and ten percent and we're touching it, you know, five percent. And yet we're going to be the spokesperson. Uh, first of all, there's a, there's a fairness issue because their blood, sweat and tears have gone into, you know, a lot of these projects and then we get to be the spokesperson. So that's a bit of an issue.
And we don't always know.
And we don't always know and, and don't always have the best representation for that project that, that we should. And so maybe that's something we talk about where there's nothing wrong with having a council member or mayor speak on behalf of a project, but to make sure that the expert's also in the room to represent that effort and the expertise behind it as well.
And that's a great approach because it is the elected official, the council member, the mayor, um, who is seen as, oh, the station's going to be happy or the interviewer, we're getting that authority. But you can bring the staff person with you. Um, and you know, the picture below that is the mayor of San Diego. He actually does speak some Spanish. And so that was an univision interview. But the person who's with him had all the subject matter expertise and was fluent. Um, and so, you know, the next slide actually makes that point perfectly is when the mayor and council members serve as spokespeople, um, that's again, when you want to get them up to speed on the latest subject matter. So that's a responsibility that you have. Before I get in front of that camera, I will want to check in and make sure I have the latest information. Um, a lot of times you're the spokesperson if you just have that personal interest, um, in a particular issue. And that can really help to bring kind of some heart or some, you know, personal affect to a particular program. But that still needs to be something that's rehearsed and never is this dynamic more important than in an emergency situation. So in a crisis moment, and the example that we have here is Mayor Matt Hall for the City of Carlsbad. This was during the Poinsettia wildfire. And so he was the spokesperson. The city had one central person. They did, you know, sometimes three press conferences a day and the city managed those press conferences with a GoPro camera going straight onto YouTube. Of course, uh, the media still showed up, but they had that direct line of communication. But the fire chief was with him at every step of the way. Um, you know, the police chief, the emergency services director. And so, um, when you really stop and think of a moment like a wildfire or a crisis, um, that's really when it gets crystallized. If we need to have a process for this, the public needs to have a spokesperson and needs to have, um, an understanding that they are getting accurate information. And a lot of times these press conferences were simply held to high, it's one o'clock, we're giving our daily. We don't have any updates. Um, but we want the public to know that the information from the six AM press conference is still the latest as of this moment. And so that's how disciplined you have to be when you're right, when you do step in front of that camera. Cause you now have that responsibility of the entire city and the entire community. Um, and it's a lot, some people don't want to be the spokesperson. They say, yeah, you know, I'll, I'll give you some tips, but you be the one that steps in front of the camera. It's a lot of responsibility when you do that.
You know, if I may, um, to Mayor Protem Ron's point, I think my approach here, absent a formal policy, has always been, um, if, if I know about it and any one of you, um, have an on-camera, uh, video uh, to, to conduct or an interview, um, my first, uh, reaction would be to offer you a sit-down, prepare you, get the technical points from a, a public works director and prepare these written comments for any one of you if you choose to take that, uh, interview. And if you don't, and a subject matter, you know, staff person is a better fit and you defer to them, then we'll do that as well. But I think always, I will probably always err on the side, if you're willing and able, then I will, uh, do whatever I can to prepare you appropriately for that on-camera interview.
But I think, so just following that, I think, from a media perspective, you know, you always see in the news and on, on camera, on, you know, uh, paper, um, the, the more candid responses to, uh, questions, right? Those are the, the soundbites that, that, that make it. And I mean, I've, I've done interviews where you spend thirty minutes with a reporter and then they take the one soundbite. And it's like, that's what they chose to print, you know, like I had some really good stuff in there and of all the things, you know.
Or somebody else's comment.
Yeah. Uh, and, and so, you know, but, but I wonder, like, so from a, from, from, from your perspective, having, you know, all this experience in, in the press, you know, if, if a jurisdiction spends all this time preparing, you know, and sort of their canned response and the professionalism, I mean, we have that expectation versus a little bit more of the, you know, shooting from the hip kind of, yeah, off the cuff kind of thing. I mean, what, what gets more traction, you know, and, and does it become frustrating, I guess? Because there's, there's definitely, you know, media relations professionals who are able to speak, you know, intelligently about the facts and the soundbites, everything else, but still make it seem more candid and folksy, right? So, so what's the, I, I, so-
It's actually exactly what you said.
Yes.
You know, some agencies make it look like, oh, we are always just saying, you know, the information that is exactly what we want the public to receive. Um, but it is actually, and it's not super time consuming. It's just that there is a level of preparation. Um, you have a responsibility to be as professional as possible, um, on behalf of everybody else's time. And it is just that principled. It's having the practice, having the principle and having the understanding. Uh, you know, this is the way, when I am asked for an interview, these are the steps that I take to make that interview the best possible. Um, you know, if, if, if I'm being asked off-the-cuff questions, I now understand, you know, the consequences of that. And that doesn't end up being the best thing for the city. That doesn't end up being the best thing for the public because then they may get confusing information and we don't want that. Um, so really it's having a process in place. When everybody's on board, it doesn't necessarily have to be the best process. You might adjust it, but at least it's something that is, um, being, you know, unified. And that's one of the most professional stances that you can take, um, in terms of the way that you present information to the public through the media as part of all the other, um, ways. I mean, you don't just put things on your website. There is a process that you go through before it becomes, this is what the city is presenting. So you want to apply similar, you know, again, there's kind of a stop and assess and check in. And we all understand these are the steps we take.
Not speaking on others' behalf, I will speak on others' behalf. And see, I think that the four of us that are here so far would agree with everything that we've talked about as far as having the facts, making sure we're briefed, um, you know, assigning responsibilities to a particular council member based on expertise or directing media to staff. I would tell you that the four of us agree on everything we've talked about so far.
Yeah. And it's a good internal exercise. Again, you'll have some that say, please don't make me talk to the media. Uh, you know, this is what I-
Yeah, we, we don't have any of those.
And then you might have others that say, you can't tell me not to talk to anyone. And of course that's true. Um, but you can work together to say, when did we get a good outcome? And when was this, uh, did this work out really well and we all, you know, felt pretty good about that? Uh, when did we not get a good outcome? And how do we just avoid that? Uh, because that can be individually taxing as well as for the organization and for your staff.
And frankly, sometimes you can't avoid it. Again, because we're five individuals. So Zach?
Yeah. So our city manager said a few things that like I struggle with it if you choose to accept it, right? Like, so we're all individuals, um, and we should all retain that individuality. We're all residents. We're all just individual people. But here we have a duty to the public, right? We have that, like, we carry that weight of being like public servant. Uh, I almost think that, um, you know, giving, and, and again, we're giving each other that leeway. And you, and you, so, hey, we're here for you if you want it, right? But there's no obligation for me to take that help, right? I almost feel like there needs to be some formal obligation to accept the help if we're going to be interfacing with reporters or the public or, or quite honestly, social media, right? Then nothing stops me from at break going outside and doing a live Facebook and, and just spewing all the information out onto the interwebs, right? So, uh, you know, and, and this is a conversation for my colleagues, but I, I feel like, you know, if we're truly, um, trying to represent the public, right? Everyone in our community, um, we have to have that sort of common denominator of like, we have paid professional staff that should be working with us if we, if we're going to go in public. Not if we want them there kind of thing. So it's, and I, and I get the free speech issues and whatnot, but there are, there are some concerns that I have about, about that. So just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, agree. Stu, you're here today. Come on.
I'm here. So, you know, with respect to what, uh, Zach just said, you know, we are the elected officials. So I think we should have that leeway or that ability to speak from, uh, our position versus the city's position. Even though we are elected officials and we represent the city, at the same token, we also represent our district and we are a group of individuals. So I don't think we have to work or, or be seen as one cohesive unit. We're not an amoeba here. So it's like, we are different, uh, and we're elected for different reasons. And so I, I think, I wouldn't want to see that in any kind of public policy that we have to take the direction of the city manager. Then what are we at that point?
And even then, how do we enforce it?
Yeah.
Yes. I think that's what, really what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Um, and we are five individuals and, um, the common denominator that we have are the facts. So.
Exactly. And really just, it's more of a process and it is so that you avoid surprises on, you, you're right. You might say, this is what was implemented, but I did not agree with it. And I'm going to say, you know, maybe I got outvoted on that one, but I'm going to be very clear on my position. The department, um, directors don't do that. It is a totally different role. But by having some agreed upon process of at least we're going to have, um, you know, I'm going to be updated on what's happening. And if the idea is that I'm checking in with the city manager just to say, hey, I'm going to be talking to this reporter. Uh, is there another, uh, somebody else being interviewed? Or just taking that moment of, you know, just kind of giving a heads up. And, you know, you're, you can still say whatever it is that you want to say, but you have a good process in place so that you also know and the expectation is, oh, let's make sure that we gather the latest information to at least have the latest facts in front of the interview that's going to be taking place. Or you do have those relationships in your district. Sometimes the reporter lives in your district. You're not going to be checking in from the barbecue to say, hey, by the way, I just got asked about this. Um, but, you know, the process here at least is, is, uh, preparing everybody so that you don't have some unexpected surprise. And that's really more just for yourself. That's kind of the training of understanding. The media has a special role. My engagement with them, um, you know, I have certain things I can do so that it doesn't end up being a negative experience for me as an elected official.
Right. And, and I do agree that it, it should be a good practice, us as individuals, to always talk with the city manager just because he'll probably have more information about something than we do.
Exactly.
And so we won't look stupid, standing at the mic, saying something and then having him come up afterward, oh, by the way.
Exactly.
You know, you don't want to have that happen.
So there's common denominators, the facts. And then we can still apply how something is going to impact our district based on the facts too. So I don't know. That's exactly what you're talking about.
To Stu's point, oftentimes our office is the clearinghouse for media inquiries for all five of you. So, um, what typically happens, um, is, uh, an email or an inquiry for, for a media response will go to all five. Um, some of you might not see it immediately. Some of you might respond immediately. And my office and myself are made aware that one of the five of you has already responded to that particular journalist or taken them up on that appointment. Um, days later, I might see, uh, one of, one of you also responding.
Okay, that's me.
Pretty soon, you know, I'm, I'm seeing, and then the journalists might take it upon themselves to email one of you directly, independent of me. So now I'm trying to figure out, or I, my office is trying to figure out, how many people do we have talking to this journalist for a particular story? And, um, and who do I need to prepare? Or is it even too late? So, I mean, these are some of the challenges that, that we face. So as a practice, uh, as an organization, at least on the staff side, we're pretty good about this. And we've been doing this for thirty years. When any member of the media contacts a professional member of my team and they're providing a response to the journalist and/or whomever in the media, you all get a copy of that response. I get a copy of that and we say, Mayor and City Council, press contact. And, and we're in real time, we're sharing that we spoke to so-and-so and this is what we told them, you know, during the course of the interview.
And we appreciate that.
Now, if the member of the council sees that and wants to add to that, I have no, no problem with that. But at least they're informed. That's my goal here is to try to keep everybody knowing sort of the angles. And I'm, I'm never directing or, or, or stepping into one of your guys' jobs, but I'm here, my office is here to sort of equip them and prepare them with facts. And so it's, sometimes it's chasing a lot of different, uh, inquiries and, and hoping all five council members, um, are, are reading things or have time to read things and, and follow, follow along.
And Aaron, you, you are really good at that. So Zach?
Yeah. Just to sort of follow up on what Councilmember Stewart said, the, the rub for me or the, the challenge is when are we, um, council members and when are we just, you know, average Joe public? And I think that's very difficult. That's a very often-
We're never Joe public anymore.
Yeah. Well, you know, some people, um, well, again, we go back to these issues that maybe are not local issues, right? And they, and they're speaking on these issues as if the, the city has a position on something that just isn't, isn't even in our purview, right? And so I think that's the blurred lines for me is, you know, again, not to take away anyone's right. And like, I, I think it's, it's healthy when we all don't agree on some things. I do think that that dialogue is healthy. But again, it's, it's when are you a council member? Um, is it all the time? Then we need to be mindful of that, right?
I think you'll always be quoted as a council member. So that's the unfortunate thing.
Yes. And I think folks need to be mindful of that.
Yeah. You might say, I'm volunteering at my kid's kindergarten. I'm a parent right now. But something that gets overheard or picked up will get quoted as, you know, your current position.
Church seems to be a big media forum for me. People come up to me, Zach, and Matt.
Well, no, and Stu, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think it's our responsibility to represent our position on an issue. The, um, and, and our, our issues may diverge from, you know, say the city's standard, you know, policy or, or position or, or opinion about something. And that's okay. But I guess my, my point is, is we just need to be aware of these things, right? I mean, you know, especially, I mean, you know, imagine a scenario where, you know, I'm commenting about- I'm commenting about a project that's occurring in, in Zach's district, Zach's supportive and for whatever reason, I'm in opposition, right? Well, I'm speaking on behalf of the city, saying I'm in opposition of, you know, and it creates a very challenging, I think, dynamic, you know, at that point to, to address that situation. The other thing is just, you know, frankly, just the facts, right? I think that's the, that's the other thing that I, I, I just want to make sure we as a council understand is that, you know, when we do speak, that we do have that opportunity. And sometimes a reporter just calls you up or emails you and, you know, it's happened to, I think all of us at some point where you answer the phone thinking it's somebody else and it's the press enterprise and you're just like, oh, shoot, you know? So, you know, you know, and then, and then you're stuck and you're, you're either, you know, use one of your tactics that you talked about.
Well, exactly. And that's the good thing of everybody's now has different tools available. So if you do get that call.
I'm in a meeting right now. Could I call you back in a minute?
Let me get your information. Are you on deadline? Is this the right number that I see on my phone? I will call you back in exactly 20 minutes. Let me just get the background noise and step aside. And then you can do a quick text, hey, I'm going to be talking to so-and-so, is there any information I need? The city manager might send you, oh, actually, the public works director talked with them yesterday and this is what they sent over. You can then look at that and say, okay, well, I, this is, I disagree with something. But at least you say, okay, well, my position is going to be that I still wish this had been a part of it, but I, now I know I'm disagreeing with, you know, with what implemented. It's just all, you know, it, it, you're right, not everybody agrees on where to go to lunch on any given day.
But it's a way to disagree amicably.
Yes. Instead of you talking to the person and not realizing, oh, was I saying something separate from what the police chief just said yesterday? And then you're the one caught off guard and, and that just does, that doesn't feel good. But you do have these different techniques and then you start to get into that practice. And each of you use these tools so that you're a little bit more in control of what you want, what you want to say and you want it to be heard effectively.
Well, and, and I'll just, I'll just end by saying too, the, the other challenge is that some of the things that we would comment on and, and we can use the pandemic as an example of that, if we have diverging positions, that's a public health, public safety issue, right? And, and if you're coming from a place without that expertise or background or understanding, you could say something that is in fact dangerous, right? And I think we've seen plenty of examples of that. You know, take a step further and say, you know, on, on a development project in town, if a council member says something that's, you know, off script or in opposition or something, that could actually put the project at risk because investors could look at that and say, well, maybe Temecula is not the right city for this, right?
Or legal exposure.
Or legal exposure. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of types of exposures that, that can occur. And, and so that's, that's all I'm saying is that if we are contemplating, you know, out of this council policy related to, you know, media relations, that we at least put in writing expectations that protect sort of the integrity of the city and the process of, of the city. And, and having differences of opinions are fine, but, you know, but, you know, that coordination and cooperation, I think, and that spirit of sort of collegiality is going to be incredibly important because, you know, you can say, you know, I don't like a project, but there's a hundred different ways of saying that and they all have implications, right? And so that's, you know, that's all I'm saying is I'd, I'd like to see out of this and out of this conversation that we get toward, you know, something that's a little bit more coordinated or.
Exactly. And even just preparing for this, those were the questions we had. Is there a written protocol? Who does the media tend to contact and ask for information? Do you have a public information officer? You know, and every city does it differently. And so you can get to something where, okay, we understand this is the process that generally we'll follow, understanding that sometimes, you know, different things happen and then we can look at, wait, we went a little differently than what we planned on, did, what worked well about that, what didn't work well? And now we're back to trying to, you know, follow a certain process that is doing the best for the city.
We live in a great city that is a city that feels like a small town and that's a very positive thing. It can also be, you know, and that's why we all say, but, you know, I'm, I'm your neighbor. I'm me, can I ever be me? Because we, that's how we feel. We still feel like we're that connected and we are that connected to the community. We're all very active and very busy and we love our districts and, and all that. So that's why I think it's incumbent upon us to always remember that words mean things. And I think, I think we're sensitive to that, but just like Matt said, they can have legal ramifications as well or, you know, economic development ramifications for us.
And those are the surprises you don't want. Suddenly you're getting a call from Sacramento or you're getting a call from, you know, a group that says, wait, is this really the city's going to now go in this direction?
You have to unwind. It's not good to unwind.
All right. Getting a quick check on the time. So I'm going to go through these quickly because we're about 15 minutes out from taking the break. But again, this is something that as you're preparing, you want to have your objectives for the interview. Your objective may be, I'm going to be the one person who speaks, who disagrees on the policy, but I'm understanding of all the information behind that and I'm going to do that in a thoughtful way. And then you also understand who the audience is for, you know, for the publication or the outlet that you're speaking to. You determine your message points, which we're going to be talking about and then also getting very specific on that topic. That is the checking in and getting the latest information. Now we say, make sure you have the latest information before you sit down for that interview. That's what we always say. But the reality is even Jenna and I walking into this training, we better check Twitter. Maybe something happened this morning that we're not aware of. In your case, maybe there was a comment, something was said when you sit down with the reporter, they might have that and you weren't quite prepared for that. So what you can be prepared, since you can't really know the latest and greatest, it is no longer just the morning news that got, the newspaper that got delivered, you can at least have your key messages that you're going to focus on, regardless of some distracting question or some potentially controversial question that comes at you. And so then that's a good way for you to be prepared. And then we talked about knowing and clearly you know your different news outlets quite well. So it's good to just kind of check on who's the beat writer for this particular issue. Is there, you know, a new staff person? Is there a new online platform that's getting a lot of traction or that's, you know, really starting to get involved in a particular issue? When you do get that call from the reporter, you know, whether it's the press enterprise or whether it's somebody calling on behalf of one of the news stations, asking for a quote or asking for a sit-down, it's, it's a great practice to say, will there be anybody else interviewed on the subject matter? Have you spoken to anybody else at the city? You know, again, are you on a particular deadline? Is this the only day that it can happen? So get as much information as you can.
I have a question too. When, you know, anytime there's controversy and we have been in the media this year, you probably know, do we then include all of those different outlets? Should we be including those in our normal press release and our normal news, you know, issuances of information? Now that the LA Times has picked us up, do we now include them in our regular media list of everything that's going on?
No, I think when there's a specific instance that has happened, you know, again, you are putting out a press release and that's available to anyone and that is where you point, any member of the media, really anyone that asks, what is, what do you have to say? You can say, oh, there was a quote provided, you repeat the quote, or you can repeat your colleague's quote and say, and this is, you can get full information on this press release. Now, as you create relationships and even as you work through difficult coverage with a particular editor or with a particular reporter, by all means, keep them in the city's rolodex, stay in contact, but they may not want to receive every press release on just the day-to-day regular operations of what's happening at the community center. So you, you're kind of strategic with when you include regional or national news outlets, even if they came to you in a moment that wasn't so positive. The one positive that comes out of that is you do have relationships and you can then go back to them and say, hey, we actually have another story that we think is of national importance. You know, and, and that then can maybe give you an entree that you wouldn't have otherwise.
Can you speak briefly to that, to the mayor's point? I think what she's alluding to is there's, there's, there's local news and regional news and then there's the AP wire. And in, in two instances in the last 12 months, Temecula found itself in the AP. So could you just speak briefly, because I, I don't know that we're in a position to begin adding major news outlets once an AP story is, is gone. So could you just speak to that? There is a difference.
Yeah. So the Associated Press is a pool of global reporters. And when something happens, like a wildfire in a community or a communications fire with something that is attracting a lot of eyeballs and opinions, you know, a reporter will be sent out and will, they will look at local coverage, but they will then take all of that and put up a national piece. It does tend to be pretty fact-based, like this happened and this is all the controversy that has stemmed. And then other national outlets start to pick up on that. Oh, isn't this interesting? Where is Temecula? You know, this is kind of playing into some national narrative or this is part, this is an example of some other controversy that we're seeing at a national or international level. But that doesn't mean that you are now engaging with the Associated Press on a regular basis. And so, you know, there's, you have to get through that coverage in the best way that you can. When it's like the Los Angeles Times, I think that's a good example of, they won't be covering everything that you're doing, but you can start to have a relationship with maybe, but the reporter's not going to want to receive every single press release.
Yeah, I think the relationship is the key.
And Jenna's our, she's the one that's actually usually the one engaging with the media on a day-to-day basis like that.
Well, I was just going to say that it's, you know, if the topic is of relevance to them that your, you know, city is putting out, I think it is okay to follow up with the AP, to follow up with Los Angeles Times. It's really, in general, best practice is just to understand what the reporter is covering, what he or she is really interested in. And they may very well want to have a follow-up interview with you about something that could be national news. So I think it's really just taking, you know, each topic and each piece of news that you want to release on a case-by-case basis and looking at the reporter and saying, is this worthy of the reporter's time? And if it is, I think it's more than, more than okay to reach out to them.
All right. So these are just some additional techniques to be believable. We talked about using those personal anecdotes. You'll be concise while you're also trying to share those stories. Now, when we say be personal, I think we've touched on a lot of this through the Q and A. We tell people, make sure that you're personable. You don't need to be so stiff, even though it can be a little scary. But these days, we're pulling back a little bit more, especially with elected officials where you don't want to be too personable. Approachable is always good. You're friendly, this is a topic that you care about, but you don't want to get pulled into providing your opinion and you don't want to get pulled into that type of conversation. You certainly don't want any off-topic conversation that could potentially include an, an off-color comment. You didn't even mean it in that way, but it is received in that way. And so, you know, we separate be personal from avoid banter and joking. You know, I was very young when I worked at CNN and so a lot of what I did was helping to mic up people, right, in Washington DC. But I saw, oh, this is actually where the real news happens. The person being interviewed doesn't even think the camera's rolling yet and it is rolling and the mic is always on. And during the mic up process, the reporter's busy doing their thing and that's when they say, you know what, be honest with me though, this isn't going to pass. And sometimes just the expression on the person's face or at the end of the interview, that's when you take a big sigh. That actually went pretty well. I got all my key messages, nothing, you know, too controversial was raised. And then the reporter might say something or the producer comes out and they're talking. And that is when they're trained or just through practice, that's when you can ask a question. And hey, by the way, were you at the hearing on Friday? That was crazy. I mean, I've heard such and such happened and you then might be confirming something that you did not want to be a part of. And so, you know, again, we're all human beings. You want to be friendly with everybody that you're spending time with. You want to take that deep breath and think that the interview's over, but you are always on. And that speaks to, am I just a dad or am I just a softball player on the weekend or am I always an elected official or a representative? And really, you are always a representative, especially when you're working with the media. Now, we're about five minutes away. So we had a section, and this is a common refrain from other press secretaries that say, does anyone have any questions for my answers? You know, they're there to provide their answers regardless of what comes at them. So I'm trying to think, should we just go, I think, quickly through the series of slides and then we'll still break at 11:00?
Sure. So basically the intent behind this is to remind you that you want to come to the interview with your key messages. You want to make sure that your key messages are getting out. A few other tips, keep your language simple. We talked about this. Skip the jargon, give examples. You know, of course, if you're a heart surgeon and you're talking to a medical journal, in that case, yes, you would use jargon, it would be appropriate. But in most cases, you want to, you know, imagine that your audience is from eight to 80 and everyone is going to understand what you're saying. Pick up the ball and run. So we talked about this a little bit. Reporters are overworked, they have deadlines, they are under pressure. So a lot of times they will come to an interview and not be fully briefed on the topic. And so that's really your opportunity to pick up the ball and run with it and educate them about the topic and in the process, really get your, your key messages across. Bridging. So questions are not always going to lead to your messages. That's when it's really important to bridge. And we have a couple of examples of how you can do that. So a couple of phrases that we've introduced here is, you know, what I can tell you is, and then you pivot to your message. You can redirect and say something along the lines of, well, you know, the real question is, you can focus, you know, what's important here is, you can reinforce, that's a great question, let me explain X, Y, and Z. And then you can also repeat. It's, repetition is not a bad thing in an interview.
And maybe we'll do this one after the break. So this is an example of a bridging. And, you know, what I can tell you, I think we see that all the time on the news. You can tailor that to be, you know, what my constituents are talking to me about. So you, you know, you kind of have a way to personalize this to a way that feels comfortable for you. Yeah, I think, let's see. And you're going to have a handout that has all of these tips and techniques. It's a lot of information. Some of it works for certain spokespeople, others say, I just don't feel comfortable doing that, but I'm going to take this. We want you to express yourself, you know, you want to, you, if you're a hand gesture person like I am, then you just kind of rehearse it and make sure that it isn't something that's distracting. We've talked about how instead of saying no comment, there's other things that you can say. You want to keep everything concise. You can address the question in a way that works in that key message. This is important. It's okay to say, I don't know. This is not practiced enough. And it's so important when you don't know to say, you know what, I'm not sure I have the latest numbers on that and I don't want to give you incorrect information. Let me write that down and when is your deadline? I will get you something within the next 30 minutes or I'll email you. So that's something that's very important. And we, you know, important enough that we stressed it quite here. You know, Jenna has something about where you can actually, if it's a taped interview, ask to, wait, can I say that again?
Yeah, so I think a lot of times people say, oh, you know, I, I said that incorrectly. I wish I would have gotten this point in. And when you're doing taped interviews for television or for radio, it's more than okay to ask the reporter, yeah, you know what, I think I could have answered that better. You know what, I, I forgot this one point. And more than often, they're more than happy to work with you and re-record it because they want the best soundbite for their story as well. Correcting misstatements. So, you know, there's going to be times when occasionally, like I said, reporters aren't going to be fully briefed on the topic and maybe they pose a question in a factually inaccurate way. You can say very courteously, courteously, you know, let me, well, actually, and then explain the actual facts. And again, they're going to be receptive to that because they want to make sure that they have the factual information in the story. And like Gabby said, you know, if you don't know, say so. We can't stress this enough. That's the absolute last thing that you want is to be quoted or on television saying the wrong thing and then having a follow-up person say, you know what, that's wrong because X, Y, and Z. So it's okay to say, you know what, I don't know, let me get the facts for you, and I'll get back to you.
And that increases credibility with the viewer, you know? Hey, why did this person say that? You can say, I don't know why they said that. You know, what I really am hearing about this issue, and then you just go right into what you want to say. So before we go into the break, we're going to leave you with a good example of somebody just being flat out, I do not know how that happened. And this also dovetails as an example of how complicated these interview scenarios get because oftentimes, you're doing them now on Zoom. So it's not just the camera in front of you, it's your laptop camera, and you don't know how that's being broadcast.
We're bringing back the old daily click for this one. You may have seen the term "cat lawyer" trending on Twitter overnight, and it's all thanks to a viral video. If you haven't seen it, check out what happened when an attorney showed up to Zoom Court.
Mr. Ponton, I believe you have a filter turned on in the video settings. You might want to...
We're trying to, can you hear me, Judge?
I can hear you. I think it's a filter.
It is, and I don't know how to remove it. I've got my assistant here, she's trying to, but I'm prepared to go forward with it. I'm here live, I'm not a cat.
Joining us now is attorney Rod Ponton. Mr. Ponton, good morning to you.
He looks just like him.
You know, when did you first yesterday realize that you owned the internet?
I was having lunch after that hearing, and I was wondering why my phone was blowing up with calls from around the country and around the world. I didn't know if I was in trouble or what was going on, but I finally figured it out. You know, I got as big a laugh out of it as everybody else.
Oh, we needed the laugh yesterday, Mr. Ponton. And walk us through what happened, that filter. How did, how did that get up there, and did you ever figure out how to get it off?
I had to get the judge's help to get it off. I was a county attorney in a very large county, the 4th and 3rd County of Texas. Had to come to a city of Presidio, to a remote city to do some business. And so I was using my secretary's computer. She's got a young daughter, and I don't know how the filter got on there.
We've all been there.
Could have been a unicorn.
Can you control it? Can you be a cat right now?
Where?
Can you become a cat right now? Do you know how to turn it on?
So I don't have the filter on right now, but it certainly made my day.
Well, it made a lot of people's, where are my quotes? There were some great quotes online, people were so relieved. Other lawyers were thanking you, saying basically, oh, there you go.
Hey, Ron. Hey. You can see Alan Hoda, Mr. Ponton, now they have their cat filters on.
People were amazed, Mr. Ponton, that you were still ready to litigate that case as a cat. You were prepared to move on, is that true?
I was. Meow, meow, meow. It can happen to anybody, but yesterday, that sure happened to me.
This is fun. It's fun. It's real fun to do.
It's been a long year, and you provided all of us a much-needed smile yesterday. So thank you, Mr. Ponton, we appreciate your time.
He's not a cat. He's not a cat.
For a moment, I let him laugh at myself.
Good, it was a lot of fun, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
A lot of respect to you, that's for sure.
Hope you won your case.
And don't, don't we love that guy?
He did such a great job. I mean, he just showed up to do, you know, business on behalf of his clients. So you can imagine, if he's with a law firm or he's with a public agency, all of a sudden, this was, every person on the planet, it seemed like, was looking at this instance that they had no control over. But he did such a great job in this interview, because he just said, I don't know how it happened. And he's a good sport about it, you know? It's his reputation, and there's nothing that we protect more than our reputation on the Today Show or on national, every social media platform. But, you know, he was composed. I think the reporters were having a little too much fun. But this is the type of environment that you're sometimes brought into interviews, and he's just a perfect example of somebody who struck that, he was personable, but, you know, he was very appealing, I think, to the viewers.
I think we should just do one council meeting with all of us looking like that.
Very modern, right?
No.
You could turn it into a city, let's vote for the filter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, let's go ahead and take a break. Let me see here. Hang on. Also, I'll come back on some of these examples. Give you something to look forward to. So I think right now, do you want to still do a 15-minute break? And so instead of 11:15, we'll come back at 11:20, and then we're going to have a couple videos that show some examples of what we've been talking about. We'll do a little bit of role-playing, and we'll have more questions. All right, let's get everybody coming on back. We've got 35 minutes to cover more information and a little bit of role-playing. So is it okay to go ahead and resume? Perfect. Okay, so that was a great break. We're going to start by talking about key messages, because we referenced that in a lot of the tips that we provided. But what are key messages? So, you know, every organization has their mission statement. We looked up the City of Temecula's mission, and that is a good place to start, where you could say, where could I get some key messages from what we have agreed to put forth for the public, and then use those key messages for my interactions with the media or with the public. However, the mission statement has a lot of information in here, right? And sometimes when you want to go into a media interview, there's a lot of information that you want to share. This is what we saw from the city manager's page, and I'll just read the first paragraph. The mission of the City of Temecula is to maintain a safe, secure, clean, healthy, and orderly community, to balance the utilization of open space, parks, trail facilities, quality jobs, public transportation, diverse housing, and adequate infrastructure, and to enhance and revitalize historic areas. Each word in that paragraph, I mean, just adequate infrastructure, that covers so many individual topics in and of itself, that it can be hard to take all that information and say, how am I supposed to come up with a key message, or how do I decide what to focus on? When it comes to developing key messages, our recommendations are to try to have no more than three, maybe four. But it becomes a little overwhelming when you're going to an interview and you're just trying to remember so much information. You also want that key message to be no more than a sentence. You can always elaborate on that once you've gotten the key messages communicated, but you need it to be pretty short. Of course, your key message should be grounded in facts and data. We're not talking about taking information and spinning it in a certain way. We get that question sometimes of, well, I've got my facts, and you're saying I've got to turn them into a key message, or am I just giving a slant? No, you want to have consistent communication. And here's back to the mission statement. How could I, if I was doing a media interview, try to come up with three key messages or themes for when I go and talk about something that the city is presenting? You know, I highlighted a couple words that stood out to me, and that's a lot, we talked about everybody's an individual, and you want to be able to go out and speak according to your values and according to the constituents that you represent. In this case, the word balance really stood out to me. You know, I can probably take a question and really talk about, we're balancing a lot of different priorities, and we're balancing in a time of challenges, but here is why this program is important. So that also gives me an opportunity to bridge. I liked how the mission statement talks about these different programs and priorities are for all age groups. So that gets you a chance to connect. I'm a mom, I have two teenagers, and so I understand that all of these different programs or the mission applies to people who are eight years old and people who are 80 years old. And so that is something that you can say, I really want to speak to that, that this is something that we're doing for all different age groups. And then I also liked how the mission statement talks about having a sense of pride. I could give some individual examples of programs that I'm very proud of because it was something that was available to everybody in the community. And then you see that the word balanced is highlighted there again. And so this is just a way to take a fact sheet on a particular project or something like the mission statement, and really see what speaks to you, and start to organize your thoughts, and start to come up with some key messages that way. And who are you messaging to? Because you do have all this information, but then you've got to think about, is the school board, I'm going to go and do an interview with the students, and they want to do something, you know, for their high school media platform or their Facebook page? Or is it the local TV news station? So who am I messaging to? And these are just some common examples of the audiences. Not only do you have the local media, which they tend to say, we just cover the public at large. You know, usually the evening news, it's a segment, maybe older viewers, and so you kind of understand who's going to be receiving the information. But then there's some platforms here locally, Temecula Talk, or every city tends to have its Nextdoor platform, and so you kind of have a sense of, that is also an audience that's going to be receiving the information. The residents in different districts or in different parts of the city, the businesses. You might have somebody who lives in Marietta but has their business here. Or likewise, a business owner here, maybe doesn't live here, but they are also somebody that needs to receive your message. Planning groups, community groups, you know, real estate groups, gardening groups, you start to get into some pretty specific audiences, and you want to take that in mind as you're developing key messages, depending on who the interview is with.
And so we talked about this a little bit before, but, you know, when we're developing the key messages, clarity and consistency is really key. We want to make sure that the messages are easily understood, as Gabby said, for anyone who's eight to 80. And then consistency in delivering it. I think the latest studies show that it's around, it takes around 13 times of seeing a piece of information before it actually registers with someone. So that's where the consistency really comes into play. You want it to be easy to follow, so one or two sentence explanations, not overly complicated, keeping it concise, short and sweet. And you want it to be target-specific. So you want it to address the location and audience-specific details. So an example of this is, we work on a water reuse project in East County. So when we were developing those key messages, we really focused on, it was for the region of East County, it was for the residents of East County and stakeholders, business owners there. And also, you want to think about the multiple communication channels. So, you know, a briefing is just one way to share and receive information with a reporter, but then there's also, you know, letting them know, as we've said, hey, please go to our website for more information, because there's only so much you're going to be able to fit into an interview, and that's where really leading them to those other resources is going to be important. The other thing is too, if you're having a public meeting, and you have the public here, and they have a lot of questions for you, and guess what, you only have, you know, another 20 minutes left in the meeting, that's where you can encourage them to, you know, write down their questions on comment cards, and then you can follow up with them for more, with a more detailed response later. And we can't emphasize this enough, you want to plan, prepare, and rehearse. You never want to be asked a new question. So we regularly work with our clients and put on the table every scenario, every single question that could potentially be posed to them, and say, okay, what are we going to say? If this is a positive question, if it's neutral, if it's somewhat hostile, what is your answer going to be? And you want to be prepared to know that. You want to anticipate all personality types. So just like we've, we've talked about with any industry, you're going to have your friendly reporters, and sometimes you're going to have your hostile reporters. You know, the main thing is that you want to stay calm and collected, don't get flustered, and really thoughtfully think through your responses, no matter how they're approaching you. You want to role-play and rehearse, as we've talked about. And sometimes it's okay, not in all circumstances, but it's okay to take notes with the media when they're interviewing, say it's a phone interview. If you don't have an answer to their question, you have that question down so that you can follow up with them with an appropriate response quickly. And same thing, as we talked about with comment cards in public meetings. This is a good example of a lesson learned. So this is that East County water reuse project that I was talking about. And at the beginning of the program, we were working with multiple media outlets to announce the project, bring awareness to the project in East County. And we had a board member tell us, you know, we don't, we don't want to have the term, and you've probably heard this term before, it's an inaccurate term, toilet-to-tap, exactly right. This board member said, you know, I want you to make sure that the media knows not to use that terminology. And we said to him, you know, if we tell them that, one, that's really not a great way to work with the media, they don't like being told what to do. And two, I guarantee you, that's the term that they're going to use. So instead of that, what we did was, we worked with the board member, we worked with our other spokespeople to be prepared in case that question was posed to them. So that instead of even repeating the term toilet-to-tap, which could be used as a quote, they were able to bridge and get to their key message of, no, 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 this is a highly purified source of water, it's clean, it's reliable, and get back on message. And as a result, we had multiple stations and television and print run stories on this project, none of which included the term toilet-to-tap. So this is some pretty basic, straightforward things, but helpful to remember for if you're on TV. For men, it's a great idea to wear a suit or sports jacket, avoiding black, it doesn't look great on camera. With a solid or toned-down contrasting tie, your shirt should be striped or solid, avoiding white, so black and white not great colors. Keep the jacket unbuttoned when seated. And then another great tip is to sit on the tail of your jacket. This actually helps keep the lapel and collar straight. And then for women, solid or striped fabrics work well. You want to avoid the prints, they can kind of get blurry on screen. Long sleeves and high necklines are usually more flattering. And we also recommend accessorizing modestly with jewelry and applying a little extra makeup just because you can look a little, the color can be drained a little bit sometimes when you're on television. And this one is great, not only for television, but this is great for your virtual meetings. I'm sure you all have experienced many of those since the pandemic, but also for interviews as well. So a great tip is, you want to find your best lighting, and you can use your phone to do this. So you can go ahead and put your camera on in selfie mode, and walk around your home, and see where your lighting is best. So if that means you need to move your setup over next to a window or get more lighting in that area, you want to adjust your camera angle. So I know I personally have had my camera angle in unflattering position, so I look like I have a double chin. You want to have it up above your eyesight just a little bit, that's usually most flattering. Know where to look. And then you want to check the full frame. So all of us, you know, I'm sure are taking Zoom calls from home these days, and so maybe you don't want the bathroom in the background or something like that. So that's where checking the full frame is important.
And these are the things that are good, again, in preparation, and you can do that with, hey, let's go over the key messages, and if you're doing a Zoom interview, checking that as well. But what you can avoid in this day of Zoom calls, or obviously for doing an interview, is when you have distractions. So we're going to talk about ways to handle things that could distract you in the middle of an interview. So I think most people have seen this. I'll play it, and this is probably the greatest distraction that the media world has ever seen.
And what will it mean for, for the wider region? I think one of your children's just walked in. I mean, shifting sands in the region, do you think relations with the North may change?
I would be surprised if they do. The, pardon me. Pardon me. Five policy.
What will this be for the region?
Five policy. North, sorry. North Korea, and South Korea's policy choices on North Korea have been severely limited in the last six months to a year.
So this was just media gold. I mean, you could hear the people in the control room laughing, as you could also hear the children screaming. So that's a, you know, you try to prepare for things like that, but the best plans can go awry, and you're going to have certain distractions. And he remained composed, but the BBC invited him back. And so this is an example of how, you know, you're still doing an interview with some distractions that are anticipated, but it's nice to know that there's this bookend, and, you know, there's a way to still kind of give a good interview when you're a little bit more prepared for the unseen, or the unexpected, rather.
It's been pretty unreal. We didn't really expect any kind of attention like this at all. We certainly never had anything like this in our life before. You know, it got to the point where we had to turn off our phones and Facebook and Twitter and all that sort of stuff. You know, we're pleased to come back to the BBC and sort of bookend this review.
Of course, we didn't get a chance to properly meet your family last time. It was under slightly different circumstances, so perhaps you can introduce your lovely wife and children now for us.
This is my wife, Chung Ha Kim. This is my son. His name is Yusup, his Korean name is Yusup, and this is my daughter, Marion, Yena.
Well, it's very nice to meet you properly and be able to talk to you, rather than just see you running around in the background. Chung Ha, how's it been for you these past few days?
You're a little bit stressful, but we are trying to handle it. We are fine, getting better, better.
The reality is, of course, is that...
So I don't know that I would have chosen a hammer to give to the child, but again, you're doing your best under some pretty extreme circumstances these days with a lot of these interviews. But it happens to the best of them, and they did a really nice job of coming back and, you know, still doing the interview. Let me get back on the... Okay, so we are now going to role-play some examples of everything that we've been covering, and then we can have some discussion of, what did we do wrong, what could have been handled better? And we're going to start with, let me switch to this microphone.
Test.
We're going to start with a very common interview scenario, where you've gathered the regional officials, the media are there to ask some questions, there's some sort of announcement being made, and you get called on to provide an answer. And you've prepared, you have all the key messages in front of you in your mind, but you can't control the question that comes your way.
Hi, Gabby. Can you tell me a little bit about the rebates that are a part of this program?
Oh, so this water resource program offers rebates that range from rain barrels to irrigation controls. Landscaping is very important. We're in a drought situation. We're all here talking about different resources available to the public so that you can prepare for the drought. And we actually have a website, there's a new webpage called ProjectWaterResource.com, and we urge everybody to go and get information from that particular page. So I've done a good job so far. So, I've done a good job so far.
That's great, but, you know, I understand you're not really practicing what you preach. I understand that you don't have drought-tolerant landscaping at your own home. What do you have to say about that?
No comment. Okay, wait, but I'm not supposed to say no comment. You know, that feels really unfair, and your publication does this all the time. And so, when you did that article last time about Project XYZ, it became personal. So, I don't know why my yard has anything to do... We're here to talk about what the public can do, and probably everybody else here on the stage with me also has a big lawn. And so, it just really feels like I'm being targeted, and I don't appreciate the question.
Do you think that's fair, though, if you're asking your residents to take certain actions, and you're not willing to take them yourself?
Well, the reason I'm not willing to take the actions myself, so I'm repeating the negatives, I've brought everybody else into an unfortunate, you know, "Hey, you're talking about drought tolerant, but you have a big yard at your home." And so, you know, if you look at our do's and don'ts, I got defensive. It's hard not to get defensive when somebody calls you right away, but you're not doing this. You know, you really feel like you're on the spot. I also maybe had some history with Jenna, the reporter, and I felt like, here she's attacking me again, and singling me out for this question. I, you know, my instinct was to just say, "No comment, I don't want to talk about my yard." You know, and then I, again, spoke for other people, saying, "Everybody here probably does the same." What I could have done in that situation, well, what about your yard? I, you know, I could have said, "You know, now that this webpage is available, and I've seen the different examples and how beautiful the before and after shots are, it's a great opportunity for me to look through some of the different changes I can make. This is something that I really encourage everyone to take a look at, and I'll certainly be taking a look at it." And the reporter can push back, but you haven't done it so far, and why is that? Well, again, there's never too late to start and to really be preparing for the future, so then I'm just going to keep coming back to the fact that the public has this resource, I'm going to take advantage of it, just as anybody else would. And when you're in a situation, and, you know, the reporter keeps coming at you, if you handle it, you know, you are answering their question, but you handle it well a few times, even the audience is like, "Okay, let's move on to the next question." And so, again, these are just, you know, ways that you can rehearse ahead of time, or think about, "How do I, what are some things I can do when I feel like I'm getting an unfair question, or when I'm feeling uncomfortable?"
I think we have a question.
I would have responded, "I've been waiting for these fabulous rebates to come into play so I can take advantage of this beautiful program."
Exactly.
And that would have just highlighted the whole program itself.
Oh, but sure, a council member wants it for the money. Now, who personally are going to apply for that program? Do you even deserve to apply for that program? You're an elected fit, blah, 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 blah.
You can say, you know, "The great thing about these programs is they're available to everyone," you know, and then, the key message, "These are the criteria." Or, go to the website and see the criteria. So, that got a little bit dicey. Now, we are at the grand opening of the latest programming at the Ronald Roberts Public Library. So, this is such a happy day, we've been working so hard to unveil this. I am so glad that we have media here. They don't always come out and cover the good news, and here comes a reporter who wants to talk to me about this wonderful programming.
Hi, Gabby, so, you know, I understand we're here to talk about the library today, but before we do, I really want to get into the funding controversy around Project XYZ and this article that I wrote about it recently. There's been some recent developments that I'm sure you're aware of, can you comment on those?
Hi, I'm so glad you were able to make it, you're right. If you look at all the different volunteers that are here, this has been the culmination of three years of hard work, and we're finally opening the doors to all of this programming. I'm really proud about the accomplishments that we have with the different programs that are being offered, and this is something that all of your readers, viewers, because it is for all ages, it's something that they can really benefit from. So, I know you mentioned Project XYZ, and I want to make sure to answer your question with regard to that, but I first want to talk about the fact that the program that are available today and that are being unveiled in this whole new wing is just the beginning. So, I do want to make sure that that is something that your viewers are aware of. And so, with the plan for the rollout, and what I have here on this fact sheet that I want to make sure that you take, is that this is phase one, and we're going to have a multi-phased approach. And then, you had a question, I think it was about a different project.
Well, what I wanted to follow up was, have you heard that Councilmember W said that you actually played a significant role in this funding controversy? Can you comment?
Yeah, that's not something that I had heard, and I think when we talk about the funding for a different project than the one that we're unveiling today, I want to make sure I give you the right information. And so, let me write down, your question is about the funding for this project, I'll check in with my colleague and understand all the information that has been shared. And then, let me get back to you, again, today we're focused on the library, and you can see that this is something where the volunteers have worked so hard, and I want to make sure to provide the information on the program, but I also will get back to you and provide those funding numbers. Let me make sure I have your card, I mean, you're doing a story about the library today, I assume, are you on deadline for the other one, or what's the best way to get back to you?
Yeah, I'll give you my card, and if you can send me an email, that'd be fantastic.
All right, so I got a little lost there, a little bit too wordy, but again, you know, there's a way to still acknowledge, okay, you want to talk about controversy project XYZ, or you want to tell me about something that I don't have all of the background on. I want to make sure that I'm honoring the event that we're at, it's at a ribbon cutting, and I want to get that information out, but I'm not going to totally ignore the question. And so, again, you know, you, it's not a regular conversation, but it's kind of a back-and-forth with a particular reporter, if that makes any sense. And it's tough, I mean, these are kind of tough because they will hold you to, you know, try different ways. And as a former reporter, of course, you say, "Yeah, but what about the..." In the past, you said the following, and so you just have to have different ways to, "Let me follow up with you on that, I just don't have that information right now." And if you focus on making sure you're getting accurate information out, that is something that no news outlet wants to have the wrong number or data, and then have to correct that.
And that reporter broadcast her intent when she said, "We're here to talk about the library, but..."
Right.
And you did that in both questions. It's the "but."
Right.
Yeah. Again, they're right to ask, but also you're right to say, "I'm going to stay focused on this, I'll work with you on the other, but I don't have the latest information." Okay, so here is what we've talked about, the famous, you know, when you are at an event and you know the media is going to be there, and you've come prepared with information, that's one scenario. When you are up on stage, and you're with other spokespeople or other elected officials, that's also another scenario. You're looking into the TV cameras, or you're talking with a reporter who's writing down their information for the print piece. This role-playing scenario is when you are approached by somebody who seems to have, not the news camera on their shoulder, or the microphone in front of you, but if you look, you know, the microphones today are the size of a pinhole. They're holding a phone out to you, and you're not sure what they're talking about. So, how do you handle a situation like that? I'm walking to my meeting.
Hi, are you Gabriella Dow?
Yes, hi.
Hi, so, I've been talking to residents in the area, and they're very concerned about the costs for Project XYZ, specifically that the costs are going to be passed on to them, and they actually don't even like the project. What do you have to say about that?
Hi, I'm sorry, I don't think I've had a chance to meet you. Are you, I'm sorry, what is your name?
I'm Jenna Caprara.
Oh, okay, hi Jenna, are you doing an article, or are you one of the constituents?
I am, I'm with XYZ.com.
Oh, okay, oh, so I used to work with Walter at XYZ, is that, are you now covering the beat?
He's on vacation right now, so I'm taking over.
Okay, okay, all right. So, Jenna, XYZ.com, good to meet you. And I'm sorry, what was your question? You had, I am running to a meeting, but you had a quick question.
Yeah, so, residents in the area are very concerned about the project costs for Project XYZ. They don't like the project, they don't want the costs passed on to them. What can you tell me about that? What are you going to do about that?
Okay, so, Project XYZ is very important, and as you know, we're getting a lot of public input, and I'm very interested in, it sounds like you also have some interviews. Have you talked with anybody else at the city, or you're getting input just by talking with members of the community?
I've talked with the mayor and a few city council members, but I want to round it out with an interview with you, and I actually need a quote, my deadline's in 30 minutes, so can you just give me a quote real quick?
Okay, absolutely, I understand. I don't have the latest information, and I want to check in on, with the project manager on some of the latest developments. So, I know your deadline is in 30 minutes, I need to get to the meeting and take care of a deadline that I have as well, but let me make sure that I get your card, I'm glad we had a chance to meet. I will get back to you within 15 minutes. That way, you also have my contact information, or I work with the project manager, and then I will be able to give you a quote that has accurate information, because I don't want to just, you know, blurt something out, and it ends up being something that confuses your readers. So, thank you for saying hello, you know, good to meet you, I'll be seeing you, I'm sure, and maybe we can coordinate a sit-down interview, and if this is something that you're going to be covering in the future. Do you have a card?
I have, just right here.
Okay, perfect, okay, thanks so much. So, that's tough. But, you know, just like somebody's accosting you and asking you, "Hey, I need a quote," take a breath, and, "Okay, what is your name?" And you, you know, they've engaged in conversation, asked you a question, you can also ask, "Oh, are you now covering this beat?" Or, "Oh, you work with this organization, are you still working with this executive director, what's your position with that organization?" And, you know, gather up some information. And, you know, then the reporter said, "I need a quote." Okay, absolutely, but let me make sure I give you an informed quote, and I don't want to pass on some information that, again, ends up confusing people. And so, this is a really difficult scenario, because it, you know, it can be a little bit threatening to have somebody come up to you, but at the same time, that is, you know, interpersonal communication, and you have people come up to you at the grocery store, and you're going to have people coming up, and again, when they're filming a video, immediately you're wondering, "What am I, what's happening here?" But if you rehearse these from time to time, then when it happens, you can already in your mind have, "Okay, this is the way that we can have a good outcome, and I can get the information that's needed and respond to that." Oof, okay. So, that was an example, too, of, I don't think Jenna was overly hostile. You know, things can get pretty bad, people can come and really start, and, you know, people are passionate about their issues and their community. And so, you know, don't take it personally, sometimes it's just somebody who's very frustrated, or it could be a local reporter who didn't get what they needed through, you know, some other interaction, and so, you know, listen, or they're on deadline, they're very stressed out. A lot of times, there's a lot thrown at you, and you can just say, "What's the specific question?" Try to get back to that fact base. Well, the question is, "When is this going to happen?" And you can say, "Well, let me go and check with the construction schedule, that fluctuates from time to time," and try to get back to, "What is the question that I can answer?" And then, again, you don't want to argue, you know, if you're being recorded, or this could be something that escalates. You want your personal space respected, but, you know, you can listen to what the frustration is, and then you can offer, in this resolution, it was, "Please let me have your card, I will get back to you," or, "Here's my card, I've got your deadline in mind, I have a deadline I'm getting to, but 15 minutes." And, you know, again, you're trying to find a positive resolution. And the last example, and, you know, looking at time here, because I do want to have some questions as well, you know, you have the TV camera sometimes, you have somebody coming up with a phone in their hand, but the reality is, if you're, and you really spoke to this of, "Sometimes I'm just at the park, I'm not expecting to be on comment." We're really finding that you really need to be careful of what you say, even if you're out on a hiking trail, or you don't think there's anybody that's overhearing, that's the number-one thing that we really say to anybody, whether it's a member of the public, a corporate representative, certainly an elected official. You pretty much are always on the record these days, and so it's just something to have in mind. So, I think as far as final review, do we want to jump to Q&amp;A for the last 10 minutes? Again, your handout is going to have all of these different reminders of techniques. And we do have a checklist that is included, you know, this is a nice thing that you can have, before you go to an interview, come back to this, write in the workbook, and highlight the things that really speak to you. But, you know, what do you know about the outlet, is it taped? This is a series of questions that you can ask. Jenna, you can...
Yeah, so, who is your audience? Obviously, that's important, and again, thinking of eight to 80, making sure that everyone's going to understand, what are your key messages, what are your three points, what are examples or anecdotes to illustrate those points? What facts, stats do you need to dramatize these points? What are the pitfalls, minefields, that's where the role-playing really comes into play? What should you not be talking about? What is proprietary information, or, you know, information that hasn't been released? And then, finally, what do you want the audience to do? What is your call to action? Are you, do you want them to go to the website for more information? Do you want them to sign up for, you know, a clothing drive? Do you want them to do XYZ? So, that's really the last thing that you want to leave the interview with.
Don't you think it's always good to have a call to action, if it's appropriate for whatever the conversation was?
Always, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's what always gets forgotten. So, we prep, and the questions happen, and they go, "Oh, I forgot to tell them about the event on Friday." We're like, "We'll follow up." Well, but, you know, that's what you really want to be on camera. So, the call to action tends to get, tends to be forgotten, but sometimes that's the most important thing. You're using that opportunity to let the public know how they can be directly involved. And so, again, for conclusion, we covered a lot of information, you saw a lot of scenarios, but this is going to be your personal communications, your personal delivery of these key messages. And so, sometimes we do this training, and people feel like, "Oh, my gosh, this is too much, and I almost feel, you know, immobile." We want you to actually be energized, and now you're empowered with some techniques and some preparation. You can work together to talk about, "Okay, this is an approach that we can take, we're engaging with the media all the time, I'm going to try this and see how it goes, and see if I get a good outcome, and I now understand maybe what I could have avoided in the past, and so I'm a little more aware of what I think I did and what I, you know, can do differently." You can rehearse and do some role-playing, that seems a little bit uncomfortable, so when you call and say, "I'm going to have an interview with this particular, you know, reporter," go ahead and, you know, if I get this question, "How have you answered it in the past?" Or, "What's the toughest question you think I could get about this?"
I love role-play.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of never get a new question. You just don't want to be that person with deer in the headlights, you're getting a question on camera, and you kind of hoped it wouldn't get asked, but you never really verbalized with, "How would I answer, you know, this potentially sensitive issue?" Somebody got information that is surprising to you, and so, you know, what is your reaction in that situation? You know, be positive about engaging with the media. Like I said, I've worked on newspapers, I've worked different, you know, TV digital platforms. It's, you know, public agencies, public service is such an important part of our communities, and the media is also a very important part, the public participating more, you know, these can all be positive things, but you want to just be prepared and put your best foot forward. And so, again, focus on facts, you know, try to stray away from opinion when it's not a platform for that. If you're on a debate show, you're invited to come, then you're there to give your opinion, and so that's all very clear. But, you know, you want to have that forethought of, "Okay, this is the right medium to present myself in this way, and this is a medium where I'm speaking on behalf of all of the hard-working employees and all of the community members that have put their heart and soul into a program." So, that's a heavy responsibility that you carry with you. And we have some final Q&amp;A, or...
So, I know we have some questions, Matt?
Yeah, quick one, probably not an easy one. So, the last couple of years haven't been exactly positive globally, or nationally, or locally, when it comes to media. And I find that not just our city, but a lot of outlets, a lot of municipalities are chasing messaging, you know, that you hear something, or something is said, and you're chasing that message rather than focusing on your own message. And it's kind of gotten to the point where, you know, even if we post something on Twitter about what a beautiful sky there is in Temecula, we're going to get a bunch of folks commenting about the color blue, and, you know, how we have a conflict of interest with air pollution or something, you know? I mean, it's just gotten, you know, to where there's just a tremendous amount of negativity. So, how do you, how do you deal with that? I mean, you know, like, in 30 seconds? But, I mean, but really, I mean, you know, how do you, how do you manage that and make sure that we're able to shift to, you know, again, like you said, what are the, what are the messages we want, the key points, the mission of the city, you know, and refocus our conversation on what we're actually supposed to be doing as a city, not all the other, you know, garbage that's out there?
Yeah, I think that's a key word of, how do we refocus? Because it is individual for, not just individual cities, but the current elected leaders for that city, so that can change. Or, if you have your leadership at the departments, or the city manager, they bring some best practices, or they, you know, have some recommendations to make, and so you take a look at also resources. You know, how much do we need to be devoting to social media? That is a real drain on public agencies. And we're seeing more and more where you don't, that doesn't have to be the place where all of the information is shared. You might get the negative comments, but you can say, "Okay, we're going to just post information that we think is important for the public, and that's about all that we're going to be doing on Facebook." Or, you look at all the different channels, I mean, are we going to have a channel in the next door? What do we do with that channel? You know, how often do we do ribbon-cutting events? Or, how often do we do one-on-one interviews? Or, you know, we agreed to do a sit-down. And so there's no, you know, how do you handle the negativity that agencies are experiencing? The media, I think, is experiencing, you know, I don't want to say negativity, but it's hard. It's really hard as they're there and other people are saying they're the local reporter. So they do have to make room for, okay, there's a new platform. Everybody's questions need to be answered. I personally think it's great that there are more people engaged. You know, you do have people coming to public meetings, but they may not understand what the public comment process consists of. And so, you know, they feel like, hey, I'm asking a question or I'm saying something and nobody's responding to me. So that's a good opportunity to provide some public information that says, you know, this is the reason why it's set up under this particular format. This person got to speak for 10 minutes because this is the public works director and he was giving a presentation. And, you know, more education, more information, more exchange of understanding why people are frustrated or where their questions are coming from. Those are a good thing and those really tend to happen in person. So we really find that less on the social media, you can kind of use your own resources, focus and staff time to, it's been very hard with the pandemic. We haven't had the community events. We haven't had the concerts at the park or again, the ribbon cutting or the unveiling. You know, the libraries were closed for a while and people didn't have that face-to-face. That's what I see is working really well is to come up with a focus of where do we want to spend our time? You have some opportunities now to do some more things in person. You know, what are some things that we can do? And start to maybe focus a little bit more on that and a little bit less on the platforms that honestly have not been positive for anybody. They're just creating confusion or frustration across the board. And so nobody says that you have to be posting on Facebook every single day. You know, people are allowed to give their opinion. And sometimes an opinion can, you know, just be allowed to sit. If somebody has information that can be corrected by linking over to the city's budget, that can be something that you say, you know, our comments are going to be limited to, for people who want to see the full report, here's a link to it. And that's it, you know, people can still discuss it. I think just having a very proactive approach in that way can be very helpful. It can help you feel a little bit more of, okay, I want to do the best with my time and with city resources. What would that look like and what would that be? As opposed to feeling reactionary and not in a way that is, you know, positive for anyone.
And Matt, you, you have a very proactive way of working with people because you're, I don't know how many times always you tell me, I met with them, I talked with them. And a lot of times it's because people don't have the proper information. So they formed their opinion based on misinformation and they're angry or concerned. But you meet with people all the time. And I think that's a really good way. And if you win those people over with the facts, and some people you're not going to win over with the facts, then they also become ambassadors and truth-tellers when they go back out to the community. Well, you know, I was upset about that. Have you found that to be the case where they're, where you've turned people around? I know you have.
Well, I, I think it's more just the personal communication, you know, more than anything. And I think that's where the city has, you know, some of our best outreach programs have, have really kept it more personal to our residents or, or businesses, right? And I think that's the thing, you know, everybody wants to be heard and I think they should be heard, right? But, you know, social media doesn't always give you a good platform for that. Council meetings, you know, by law, don't necessarily give a great platform for that either. But the, you know, coffee with the mayors and, you know, that kind of stuff, that really, that really helps, you know. And, and, you know, I always joke and say, you know, look, it's, it's your dime. If you want to just sit and yell at me for an hour, that's fine. But if you want to have a productive conversation, we can do that too. And that's my preference, right? And I think that's, that's kind of where, you know, the city, you know, we, we have, you know, 25, 30 different outlets of, of information. And yet we still have folks who come to council meetings and say, oh, I've never heard this before. I don't get this information, I don't know, you know. And, and part of me says, well, you know, just like look it up, just Google it, it's out there. But then part of me also thinks, you know, it's, it's a bit of a communication failure on our part because there are folks who just aren't plugged in and don't, don't have this information. So I'm just, I'm always trying to find, you know, ways, how do we bridge that, that gap? And, and I think you're absolutely right. It's that lack of, of personal interaction that we've been without for the last couple of years.
Yeah, and that goes so far. I mean, you're absolutely right. I've never heard of that before. Well, Jenna mentioned, it used to be that you have to see something six, seven, eight times before you even realize you've seen it. People can drive by a billboard or scroll and see something, but it doesn't register what they've seen. Now it's more like 13 times where, you know, oh, you stop and look and you actually think. Does that apply to me or what is that all about? And so attention spans have gotten a lot shorter. I mean, the devices that we all have on our phones do impact our attention span. And so that is just the, you know, challenging new reality that everybody's working within. You, I think, having face-to-face communication and putting your effort on that and putting more emphasis on, I mean, again, you have to have the event that's scheduled. That does give you time to prepare and say, what are the main things we want to say about this new program? You know, if we're going to have media, how do we want to rehearse? Who's going to be the main person that serves as a spokesperson? Or what's the one thing that we can all say, even though we have different takes? You know, maybe different, you know, personal thoughts about it. But at least the most important thing is to make sure people know to register or that this is available for them. That is a much, it's just a different experience than reacting immediately on social media. And having it be something that comes back and, you know, just creates a distraction from the other things that you want to be spending your time on. Councilmember Stewart has a question.
Yeah, well, it's more of an observation. I'm very active on social media and I get a lot of questions from a lot of people about a lot of things. And 99 out of 100 times, alls I do is ask them, do you have the app on your phone? And as soon as I tell them, put the app on the phone, there's a scroll down for that. You just go to that, you can talk directly to our public works department. You can talk directly to our city managers department. You can talk directly to any one of us with just a couple of quick clicks. And they're also appreciative of that because 99 times out of 100, they don't know it exists. And it's like, and I put it out there every single, like at least twice a month. I say, download the app, it's the best thing ever. You know, and, and once they, once they get used to it and it integrates into their life and their thought pattern, they all come back and go, it's the best thing ever. They fixed that pothole within 24 hours. Yep, you know, Pat took care of that or, you know, Aaron took care of that. Or, you know, there's, I get all the accolades for just pointing them to something that's already sitting there.
And you know what, it's true. Repetition, you're doing exactly what we covered here. You've got a call to action, you know, download this or, you know, look it up. And you're doing it repeatedly. So instead of trying to answer the question right there in the moment, you're giving them a resource. If you want to know when that pothole will be filled, a really great way to track it and submit it, I can do it for you. But then, and then when you're having these conversations on social media, they're not conversations with that one person. You've got a whole audience. And so that is something that people sometimes get distracted by or they forget. And so, yeah, that's a perfect way to really route them to a resource that's going to help them. That's not an opinion-based issue. It's, this is a resource that's available and this is how you use it. Zach?
Yeah, so no questions, just maybe a comment. That, you know, sitting here and sort of digesting this presentation, when we leave here is almost 100% guaranteed that a reporter will not approach us and start asking us questions, right? So just being a little thankful that, you know, our, our town is still sleepy enough that we're not sort of hounded in that way. The, the media though, for us, is all social media now, right? Like everything is just what you do online, how you carry yourself online. And those are where those questions come up, whether it's someone that tags you in a comment and wants to engage you and is trying to engage you or then starts sending you private messages and the like. So it, it just doesn't look traditional. But now maybe it's the new traditional, maybe perhaps. But I came here today to just sort of digest this and learn and, and I did. There were, you know, there's some, some things in here that I know will help me just be a better councilmember. So thank you for the presentation and giving us an opportunity really to have this dialogue as well. To sort of, the four of us can, can dialogue on expectations and, and the like, so.
Absolutely. And that was the best part was the back and forth and really understanding how this can be personally applied. Not just for the city and not just for a particular subject area, but for the individuals that are having to go, you know, and do the media interviews and have this engagement. So yeah, this was absolutely our pleasure.
So in my five or six pages of notes, I have selected the things that I'm going to take away. So my takeaway today is going to be policy. I think that's going to be critical. And how we implement it and how we, you know, engage each other according to that policy. For me personally, the, the next one is going to be be succinct. Because I'm very folksy and I have a tendency to go on. So, so I'm going to have to, I'm going to write myself a note at every council meeting that says be succinct. I know, you're all laughing at me, stop it, stop. And you over there, stop. And the third one is that I think Temecula is the best city in the country. And I think that we're all sincere in our desire to serve our residents. And even though we're in districts, I believe that, that we still think of the city as a whole. I just don't focus on, quote me now, on my district necessarily because there's so many things that impact the entire city and that's the way it should be. We have to think of everything as being connected because it is connected, so. And then the, the final thing is, I think that it's been demonstrated that we all get along, we all respect each other. I'll go so far as to say, we all really like each other and we're all on the same page. And finally is, we believe truly, I'm speaking for other people, on behalf of other people, we do believe that we have the best city staff in the country. And they are responsive and they have to deal with five different personalities. And they do it with aplomb and very, very, very well. So thank you, city staff. And this has been great.
A lot of work behind the scenes, so absolutely.
Thank you guys. Thanks for the great questions.
So I better go back to the agenda now. Randy, help.
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comments on this item. However, if Mr. City Manager could go ahead and provide some closing comments. And then with that, you can adjourn if you would like.
Yeah, thank you both ladies for, for today. It was helpful and, and certainly good reminders for a lot of us. And, and that's why we, we had the staff here as well, so thank you. I guess just to confirm sort of where we go from here, you know, I heard, I heard some different things. So I, it would be helpful, I think, if just a next step or any sort of council direction. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I kind of heard that as a part of the city council handbook, at, at least a few of you had mentioned a draft of some type of city council media guideline or policy and stuff. And if that, and we, if that's the direction that we're getting, and I understand Councilman Stewart's, your concern about not being, not tying your hands down, but, but, but flexibility within the guideline or the policy. If that is the direction today and the one follow-up action item, then we can take that and, and go back and sort of bring something in draft form. But any, any other things that I missed today?
Matt, do you want to say anything about policy?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I just think it, as we're developing that, that council, you know, policy guideline, we, we don't have anything formal on, on how we communicate externally. And I, I just think it would be helpful for us to sort of create a bit of a framework around that and say, hey, when we do get media inquiries, if it's, you know, run through a central, you know, so we're clear, you know, who's been in contact, you know, just the logistics of it, I think, are, are key. Make sure we have all our facts when, when necessary. But then, you know, but also I think just the, the ability to, to know that, you know, like if I get contacted by somebody in the press, just to be able to relay that to the city manager so that nobody's blindsided by, you know, a comment or an article that's written.
Or at least you use the city manager as a resource, at the very least.
And honestly, I mean, we all know that these are just policies. There's no enforcement mechanism behind it. But it's, it's just sort of a courtesy thing that says, you know, look, we all want, want the best and we all, I think, agree that we want the best thing for the city. And that ability to sort of have a policy in place and say, hey, look, here's the guidelines. This is how we want to interact as a city ideally, while still giving us the flexibility to have our own voice and, and express our own opinions.
Are you good with that, Stu?